Got so many presents today.
Okay.
Oh Jen, do you need one or two or whatever? I don't know.
I'm giving you two. And then where does it live? I need one for um.
One for Michael.
And then what do you need Jen? There's three left.
Table. Are we on here?
Yes, I believe so.
Yeah, alright, you ready?
Yeah.
Alright, pledge allegiance.
No, get the.
We're making a motion.
Gotta open.
Make a motion.
For what? Pledge allegiance right now.
We're gonna.
We're not opening the meeting.
Oh yeah, alright, let's open the meeting.
I make a motion to open the meeting.
Second.
Alright, all in favor? Alright, let's go. Pledge allegiance, I'm gonna hurry. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alright. Public hearing stat.
Make a motion.
We're gonna make a motion.
Public hearing.
Yeah, make a motion Laura.
I make a motion.
Do we have a second? Second, all in favor?
Man, you question right along tonight.
Yeah, it looks busy. Alright, Nick's up.
Nick, you're up.
Alright, so the idea of the public hearing is you're presenting to the public, not us.
Is there anybody in that?
Is anybody here? Everybody signed in?
No.
Is there anybody here for the Nick Boston public hearing? Well, we still need you to present to the public.
Cool, no problem.
Yeah, camera in the audience here.
Alright, just sit down, chat.
Yeah, yeah, we just need you to describe to the public what you're doing.
Okay.
What's going on.
Dating.
Dating, business, what are you here for? Alright, when we set this for, ten to fifteen?
We didn't, we didn't, we didn't because we don't want to do it.
Alright, so a lot of stuff will be a recap for the board, that's the public aspect. Myself, Eric Salinas, the board from survey, who is the tenant Nick Boston, four oh three Carl Brody Highway in Southern Maine. Also know their tax map R seven lot sixty two de- uh sixty seven dash two, sorry. Uh, this is an existing lot with just over five acres in size, four hundred thirteen feet of frontage on Carl Brody Highway. The parcel's currently being used as, I messed this up last night, but we'll say general purpose district. Similar to neighboring properties. Nick owns a dumpster rental company called the Can Man here in town. It has been growing rapidly due to hard work, a lot of weekend hours. With the dimensional requirements for the general purpose district listed on note five on the survey. Parcel's not in the flood zone, the wetlands were delineated by Mark Hampton on July twenty second, twenty twenty four. He's also prepared a report, it was pretty extensive, and that was part of the original application of the board has. This project started sometime in twenty twenty three when Nick cleared approximately half an acre of his property, which was six thousand nine hundred ninety-three square feet, if he's counting, to construct a new parking area. Unbeknownst to Nick, a few things were required prior to doing so. After some conversations with the town, all work has stopped in the parcel. We got involved, got the wetlands delineated, and a survey conducted. Starting with the impacts, the wetland area impact is twelve thousand square feet in size, of which nine thousand three hundred eighty-six square feet were impacted unintentionally.
Doesn't make sense.
No, the wetland disturbance is nine thousand three hundred eighty-six feet. The disturbed area in total was around twelve thousand. Our proposed plan protects these wetlands and will allow them to return to a natural state, as the board saw on their site walk a few weeks ago. We are proposing a silt sock which will be installed on the uphill side, preventing a segment from eroding into the resource during construction. The proposed eighty-seven hundred square foot gravel lot will be used for clean dumpster storage, allowing Nick to have a professional business facade. Uh, the grading of the lot is minimal, as the board saw when they were out there. It's a relatively flat area, slopes gently towards the road, uh, which would be captured by an existing drainage swale. Now, in the midst of all the impacts back in twenty twenty three, that drainage swale got disturbed, um, and it has since been left alone. So, part of the plan is for approximately two thousand square feet of temporary impacts. That's just to clean that swale out to get things kind of flowing the way they were flowing before. That was pretty much it for the general overview for the public hearing part. Jump into the, the last meeting and what came up in the last meeting. We added a few notes.
Let's hang on, we gotta, we gotta see if there's any questions. We gotta, we gotta separate the two aims.
Separate.
So, give it a couple minutes and anybody has any questions?
See if I need phone friend.
Yeah, I'm gonna phone friend, yeah. We're not expecting anything. We wanna, well, I give them five minutes.
We didn't, we didn't say anything, did we?
No, we didn't put a time limit on it.
Because, just me.
We were sitting down.
It's, we didn't have said there. Yeah.
We're at six ten.
Okay. We've got like four minutes, and show nobody shows up late.
Yeah, sounds good.
And then we'll just, we'll close that and go to our regular meeting.
Okay.
Never see any Reese's, maybe I can table file.
Cause nobody's listening.
I used to trade for those number buyers back in elementary school. I never liked them, I loved the chocolate days. You'd be a repeat customer for me? I would like to. My mother would back mine, like, ugh.
Swiss wheels though?
Yeah. I like that. No. I'd always trade for the chocolate yogurt things, the little cups, squeeze it. Didn't really be applying term though when you were grabbing saw and rolling it with snow.
It's all Swiss roll.
Didn't know.
Just like.
You wanna make a motion to end this?
I make a motion to end the public hearing.
Do you have a second?
One second.
All in favor? Alright, public hearing closed, alright, turn the motion, open the regular meeting.
Make a motion to open the regular meeting.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is open, alright.
Okay, so, can names at the table? Yeah, so it's going off of our original meeting last month. We had a few questions, some changes to the plan, so I'll jump right into those. We did add a label, a label, a label. To replenish the existing riprap on that side of the parking lot. While that was a concern of the board, pretty easy enough. You know, we could put on a standard three inch stone instead of there for some new riprap while Nick's redoing the drainage swale. We have also added in a proposed sign which fully resides on the property. You can see that at the southeastern leak corner of the gravel drive. It's a relatively small line work in a congested area, but it doesn't reside right there. And we used the distance off the traveled way from neighboring properties. My guys went out and shot a couple signs in pavement, and we just laid it out accordance to that. So it seemed like it'd be a good, good spot, it's a good fit with the stretch of road right there, and it is on Nick's property as mentioned. You can see the proposed mulch berm, and we put a little detail A in there showing the erosion, erosion control, berm mixture between the gravel drive and the wetland area. All this stuff was staked, you guys were able to see it. And lastly, we did submit one waiver for this application. We're requesting a waiver, a waiver from the Lebanon Site Plan Ordinance, Article G, Section two dash J, Stormwater Management. File this waiver under the direction of Article four, Section three dash C, waiver submissions with an emphasis on small projects. By accepting this waiver, there's no hardship to the public health, safety, general welfare. Understood, the site has been previously disturbed, the site is unstable. Flow of storm water is straightforward, as shown on the survey, gently sloping towards the road. Are no adverse effects to neighboring properties. Project is small in nature and will no effects to neighboring properties. That's basically the recap of our conversation last month. And we left for the board's approval to move forward with the construction. And I don't believe there's any plans for a sign now that did come up in the last meeting. We're just getting it on the site plan for when Nick is gonna send that, and then we don't have to come back before you guys.
Anybody anything to add after the site walk? Ministry of War? Nothing to need some change?
I don't think so.
I don't think Joe cleared it out. So, yeah, we'll go through our list of submission items, and then we'll just go through our approval standards. Go through our waivers. And our list of submission items. Yeah, we have an approved application. Right evidence of creative title and interest is there. We get a written description, we have a name of the project, the survey was completed, it was in front of us. Existing conditions on the survey, topography on the survey, existing buildings located, existing traffic patterns. They've asked for a waiver on the storm water, we have a letter here, which is what Eric just read. That's our own copy.
I have another column, you can write one too, I don't need that.
Don't read this thing.
It's exactly what he just read, yes. He's requesting that waiver. Next submission, erosion control is shown. There is no utilities, there is no existing landscaping, lighting, signs is shown. There is no noise, no exterior storage, and financial and technical capacities. You wanna do it all at once, Danny, or you wanna do the wave the storm water right now?
We can just do it all at once. We'll get it approved.
Alright, perfect, go on to the approval standards. Uh, utilization of the site. Development will reflect the natural capabilities of this site to support the development. Wrong agreement?
Yes.
Adequacy of the road system, there's no public, it's a driveway. Uh, access into the site, existing?
Existing.
Internal vehicular circulation, it's just his trucks going in and dumpsters. Parking layout and design is N A, no pedestrians. Stormwater management, they've asked for a waiver, but we've been provided a plan with grass line swales. Any area that's not being used as gravel is gonna be loamed and seeded. Uh, erosion control is a detail, and we've asked for self fence or erosion berm on the lower side. No water, no sewer, no utilities, solid waste, did you need that answer? That's one of our favorite. Alright.
Gotta give you the closure.
Yeah, just, you know, make sure. I'm hollow. Yeah. No, they're on wheels, remember? They roll, very good. No shoreline relationship here, there's no, the only landscaping we've asked for is re-loamed and ceded. No exterior lighting. Uh, we've been given a sign location that we can approve as part of this. And you still need a permit from code if you do put a sign in. Uh, then no storage of material, just empty, empty cans. And seems a technical and financial capacity, we don't seem to have any on that group.
No, unfortunately, probably have a lot invested at this point.
Yeah. Anybody have anything to add? Alright. We got our new plan, I see everything's been added that we've asked for.
Yep.
Alright. Do you wanna make a motion to accept?
I'm making a motion to accept the plan by the Can Man, AKA as Nick Boston, as complete with a waiver for storm water management.
Second.
Second.
Alright, all in favor? You're approved, Nick?
Yeah.
We will do a next meeting to have some findings to go to Laura and notify.
Are we gonna record these plans?
I don't typically record site plans.
No, I don't. I don't. There's no, there's no building.
No, long have on file.
It's just a requirement we have to draw up. So we should, uh, let's put a motion to waive that, and then we'll.
I'll make a motion to waive the recording of the Can Man, AKA Nick Boston's plan, we'll just keep it on file.
Yeah, then we need to sign one.
All in favor?
And we will sign one?
Yeah.
Just saying.
Just saying.
Who's gonna place this?
Who's gonna find it?
I don't know.
Yes, well, hopefully it's out for the next month.
Autumn, April.
Autumn, are you there? Jen's gonna get the screen.
How long do I have to wait? Uh, one year.
You have one year.
One year, so you start waiting for your back info? Yes, why don't you have back info, it's in one year's time. And you can ask for two six months' extensions. Please write your letters and ask for.
Yeah, if you wanna get it.
It's much easier if you do.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, thank you.
Have a good night.
Have a good night, man.
Make sure you.
Yeah, seems like all.
Yes.
Others being, like, you skipped it with shopping off the cross.
It seemed longer than that.
Just two.
Two sign?
That was a much better statement.
She's been training. Number two. Were you in there yet? I left one. There we go. Can you see the button?
So this is. Heath Road. Is that down here? I can scan them now, too.
You can scan plans now?
I can.
Nice.
Wow.
We're gonna have to review the budget for paper now.
Yeah. Did that cut into the?
Right.
Our being at it for a while, our being.
Probably a lot of it.
Probably put money away for us.
Probably, millions.
How long do we want, big blind weight, or we wanna?
Research?
You were right there, bud.
Re- research?
Your research?
I took a.
Can't use the letter. Okay. Alright, that's it, good night, everybody. Two in a row, wow. Alright, where we starting?
Okay, Heath Road.
Alright, what do we got today? After our site walk?
After our site walk and, uh, our conversation out there, um, we have hopefully the final set of plans. Let's see. I had sent a letter to the board, um, after last meeting, regarding the concrete washout areas and the driveways and suchlike. And I'm hoping that you guys have a copy of that?
Yeah, we must. I remember reading, I remember reading.
Okay.
We definitely have it in email.
You want it, is that changed?
If you, I think I have a bigger copy of it, but.
I want to make sure.
No, I have the previous one.
I know we haven't anymore. You've got it. You've been in that, right?
No, no, I've never had, so.
Odds of getting it to.
Well, there's no internet.
So, the internet or.
Okay, that's what.
I know I read it, so.
That's it, right?
Yes.
Okay.
No, my brother, my brother will date him, but I never did.
So, based on our previous conversation last time we were all here, there were four things that the planning board had asked about. One was the concrete washair, washout areas needed to be delineated. The driveways needed cross sections and details. You wanted building and septic designs and the locations of the building within the proposed three K areas. After speaking with my employer and our engineering staff, which I will once again point out, we don't have any main licensed engineers. We're happy to put notes on the plan stating that the concrete washout areas have to be placed in accordance with main DEP rules. But to specify areas for this purpose, on the plan is beyond the scope of the planning board subdivision review, we think. In that, as long as it is handled within the DEP rules, showing exactly where it needs to be on each lot or any lot, is more of a construction scheduling matter than it is necessarily subdivision.
Did we see a detail in the plan that was expected?
Yes. Um.
And I think that's more important than.
Yeah, and the, in the sheets, um, which I've given you guys previously, the, um, these dewatering areas will be pretty much identical to the concrete washouts. And that's the general size and, um, height that will be used for this project.
Is main DEP requiring to be lined or anything, or fabric or plastic?
I don't know. Our detail shows the woven filter fabric. I don't know, I would have to check the DEP rules.
Okay. I mean, in my opinion, I think as long as it's in there, then it's expected in the details. And it goes back to just the proximity of the hotlands.
Yeah, no, absolutely.
Just one caution, concrete trucks washing out everywhere.
Right.
No hybrid.
Um, so the second thing, ordinance does state that the driveway permits are required. And so the, uh, actual driveway locations and, um, details and cross sections should be something that should happen at the time that those driveways are being built.
Well, we still need to note on the plan about the driveway permits. And, I mean, if we have, and not this one, but we have required location of driveways based on site distances to.
Correct.
So, it's not unusual for us to require driveways to be shown on the plans.
Yep, and we're perfectly happy to, um, deal with that. But as far as the exact locations of the driveways, as you saw out there, there's already an existing drive here. This area right here is for the PBN.
Right.
This one is for the PBN.
Yeah.
And then this one is already existing, which means that this is the only one that we would need to show. And as we looked at it in the site walk, there appeared to be plenty of site distance on that. We can, you know, we just prove that out if necessary.
We just need, somehow it has to be worded so they understand all the other lots are, the driveways are.
Affixed.
Approved, yeah.
Sure.
Well, I think a lot of you had limited access.
Right, and you gotta. The wetlands crossing.
Correct, correct.
Right. But that's.
And I think as a board, we still need to discuss the easement driveway access. The one that goes to the back lot.
Yeah.
And you, are you showing one driveway off that now, or?
There are two driveways off of it. So, this one comes out where we had discussed in the site walk.
Yeah.
These two will come off of that easement.
So, yes.
And that was part of my conversation with the abutter, uh, the other day because, he was the one who owns the parcel that's landlocked up and back, and this is his only point of access, which is why we were planning on, you know, basically this gate would move to here. And so that he'd still have access straight up through.
These driveways come out.
Yeah, and you're accessing three lots with one easement.
One easement.
Of a non-spec town road.
Correct.
So, cause if now if you add, then you get this giant parcel, somebody adds a house here.
Yeah, so it's three.
We're three.
And wall.
It's three lots.
Let's go back, three lots of this one guy.
Yes.
For one, for that single access.
So.
Those are, that was, that's what's going on here.
Yeah, I mean, the lots that are in back here are not realistically buildable. The one that is all the way in the back, Mr. Mewers.
I don't think that's their concern, though.
Right, and you could just build one house, right?
Yeah, that's not very concerned whether it's buildable or not. I mean, if we looked at some of this land when we looked at the site walk, we'll determine that some of that land is not buildable, right? So we're being very select where the houses go. But whether it's, it doesn't really, it's not the fact that that's not buildable back there, but still gonna access it. So it's still a lot. And whether they can fit a house back there on that one big piece in one point in time or not.
When it starts that it's doable, it's what we should, this easement should be brought to for a standard. I think that would trigger.
That would trigger, right.
Right. Right. Yes, so driveway is vehicular accessway serving two dwelling units or less. Now, yes, you're only serving two, but there's a potential you could place one house right there.
Cause that's the easement.
Right? There's nothing, nobody's told us that there will never be a house built, and we know this, I mean, this building will land there.
Even in the description, it says that it was in nine lot subdivision, on which only eight of the houses were rebuilt. So it's already describing as a nine lot subdivision being these eight. And so it's, they're calling it a lot in the letter that they sent to historian, so there must be a lot, so. The possibility of it becoming a lot is already laid out.
And so we'd be approving something as a driveway that's.
There's something to drive, inadequate to access.
Right. So that's a concern with that. It's not that you can't do what we're doing, it's a condition where that needs to be brought up to town standards.
Okay.
That piece of roadway.
Yeah. Which is an easement.
Which is an easement.
Very. Well, it's an easement today, but be rolled along.
Right.
By the time we're done. Super happy.
Well, how far up does it have to be just to the lot line, right? To where he's gonna put the whole fence to.
Right, cause that would be.
Go into, roughly what's that distance?
Uh, it's about five hundred and fifty feet.
What's the maximum?
What's that?
The width of it would be sixty.
Sixty, so it's wide enough. And you're asking it just to be a driveway?
Yeah, because there's no intent to do anything beyond that other than accessing it for forestry reasons.
But as Michael said, it's a nine lot subdivision and that's the nine.
That's the nine lot. Yeah, it's described as a nine lot subdivision and now we've sent a letter out to the historian.
Right, because of the fact that it has to, because of this initial split.
Right.
Oh, yeah, why?
You know, within the five year period.
But it's still three lots.
And you already, you already know our concerns of the shared driveways.
Yep.
Just cause it's come back to haunt us in the past.
Yep.
I think that's something we still gotta work through as a board. Do you wanna go through that? I know we had some other, um. That gets us to set number two on your list, right?
Yep.
Number three.
Sure.
We'll come back to that.
So on number three, um, we've demonstrated viability of both the building and septic construction on each lot within the confines of the ordinance. Um, holding the owners to exact locations and designs is beyond the scope of subdivision review. As long as they're building it within these areas where we've demonstrated that it works.
Yeah, it's not. It's not, and I think we're happy with that, I respect it, as long as they're in the, as long as they fall in the envelopes.
Yep.
And we get the foundation certification and they're in there.
Yeah, absolutely.
We're fine with that, that's all we know.
Um, and similarly, um, we can add a note that the buildings and other items must meet all town and state requirements, which is, you know, kind of a no-brainer.
Yeah.
But, um, but existing on their exact location again is above and on the.
No, I think that might be some discussion that we just had, but I don't think we ever actually nailed that down, so.
Sure, yeah, no, I'm just.
As long as they fall in, yeah, as long as they fall in the envelopes and the certified foundation, foundations are in those envelopes, we're happy.
Yep.
Yeah, the only time to be a concern is when you did the inspection, they come back and it was supposed to be here and it's four hundred feet that way.
Yeah, yeah.
They're not even within the round three.
Right, absolutely, no, I mean, my, my concern was, you know. Like, for example, if this lot, um, they decide that they want the house to be this direction instead of this direction. And so it falls outside that box.
Yeah.
It's still outside of any of the setbacks, it's not affecting the amount of area that's being changed, so on and so forth.
Yeah, as long as it falls within the envelope, we're happy.
Okay. Okay. So. As far as.
That's a slide we kinda see it.
As far as. I can tell the major issue right at the moment is that access easement and the location of the driveways for, uh, lot eight.
Yeah, and I think you've demonstrated though, the site distance is a good on lot eight.
Mm-hmm.
So that one can be. As discussed, it can be placed in a field that, I feel, you know, meeting the requirements of the town.
Yep.
You got any problem with that one, Denny?
No, no.
And there were several options, but it will not be coming off the easement?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, no, I think once we went down to that other side, it was much better.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, and I agree, I mean, just topographically, it makes more sense to have the single driveway up that way.
How many lots do we have now with shared driveways?
Um, one, two, three, four.
And then we have the shared.
Yeah, beside that.
You got six, six lots.
Six lots.
A shared driveways.
So that was, that was the thing, not to go left field here, that was one of the things that we had talked about was, you know, how the D's ought to be written on that.
Yeah.
As far as that goes too, which has driveways and even, I mean, we have to discuss that as well because, you know, before my time, right? But I know there's been some, some hiccups in the past with that.
You said all the details have been added to the plan as far as the driveway crossings and.
So, yeah, the, um.
Yeah, you do have the.
Each of those areas, yeah, that, um, I've already given that to the board, um, with the wetland permit, yeah. And there was, um, we also received a letter from, uh, Historic Review saying that there was no, uh. Uh, that they found no historic, uh, or archaeological areas of interest anywhere on the site.
We walked it, we did, it's definitely buildable locations.
No, no, it's, uh.
Some are more hard to get to, but.
Yeah, no, you, um, you may ask more for, uh, our money, but.
I don't pick the sites.
And by permit, by rule, we'll assess and treat it as one, one site in erosion control inspections and.
Yeah, yeah.
Again, going back on all the white lines.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, and if the town has, um, specific language that they would like to see for those driveway easements. Um, or examples of what they would like, we're more than happy to incorporate that.
Would they be part of the deed?
Yes, absolutely, yeah.
And we do have a sample deed or a draft deed, right?
Mm-hmm.
Provide this one.
Oh, and one of the, uh, one of the other things that we had discussed previously that, um. We had talked about was fire suppression. And, um, we're planning on doing cisterns for the, uh, for each lot. For sufficient.
Yeah, I can't. No, I got one, I actually read it. We just received a new letter from the chief.
No, it's not new. He was supposed to be here tonight so we could all go over it, so we haven't gone over it yet.
There's a new one, um, I'd like to.
Do we have one?
Yeah.
It's in our.
It came, it came in as an email.
That's the existing one.
This is the existing.
This is the existing one? That's the existing.
Okay. Okay, so.
So the one, it's the one that I already have, Jeff?
Yeah.
Yeah, but he wants to go over it.
So, so it's calling for a ten thousand gallons of storage plus two thousand for each lot. So, what's the plan?
Can I see that list?
Yeah. If we're going cisterns. This is no, no location shown.
Do you have any other cards?
Do I?
Do you have the papers with that?
Uh, it's, yeah, it's right here. No, it's this one, is it?
Oh, this paper.
Thank you.
I didn't know she ended up with it, yeah.
So, as far as the cistern goes, we have a couple of places that we can put it. Um, depending on where the fire chief would like it to be, um. You know, we, obviously, you know, it's probably going to end up down here. Just so that it's easiest to access for the fire department. Um, but an exact location, um, we need to talk to the fire chief about where it belongs at.
Cause I mean, if it's down there, we're gonna need a proposed turnout off the road. And I know his, his new letter that we have a draft copy of had quite a few specific requirements, what he's gonna be looking for.
Okay, um, well, if I can get a copy of that, uh, we'll try to address that.
Is it this, these are the new requirements or is this the old?
That's.
So those are the existing ones.
Okay, so the new letter he just sent, like, two weeks ago was.
Supersedes that one, yeah.
Right.
We're supposed to have discussed that night, so we'll have to.
Yeah.
And he isn't here, sorry.
We'll have to.
Yeah, one of the things that we did discuss was the possibility of, um, individual cisterns. Um, I'm not sure if that will pass muster with the fire chief, but that was part of our conversation that we were planning on having.
Yeah, I mean, that would be in the schedule, but it seems like a lot of maintenance and a lot of checking, you know. Cause then we still have to work through cisterns. Cause we haven't, I don't think we've had one with a cistern in a lot. And I believe this new letter is gonna require five, well, it's here to five year argument from the developer. That was probably the old letter. He did have a few more standards and specifications for.
Okay, should have to be eighteen.
Is that, those standards that are adopted by the town? Are they, are they good record?
No, these are part of the subdivision requirements.
Like you said, it's a new letter.
We get a new letter early, yeah.
So, if it's a new letter that needs to be adopted, or you go by the old?
It's part of the subdivision requirements and it's part of the, it's part of the subdivision regulations of the fire chief writes this letter.
Mm-hmm.
So it doesn't need to be adopted, it's, it's already part of the subdivision, so.
Your whole letter is part of the subdivision.
Yeah, this letter has been generated since two thousand and five every year.
Every year, it's updated, it doesn't matter where you go.
It's part of, every year and it's part of the subdivision regulations.
Did chief ask to supply the possible letter?
So I think.
This is an in ordinance.
I think what he's getting at is that because this project has been going on before the new letter has come out, that we should be held to the old standards as opposed to the new ones. You know, is that?
You're changing, we agree.
Yeah.
But we haven't approved this, this plan at all.
Understood.
I mean, this plan still in the permanent stages, it's.
And I think a lot of his new letter, from what I know by memory, it was more clarification.
Okay.
On some of these general terms and stuff. I know the sizing didn't change, obviously the hookups. I, I think there was just a lot more clear, detailed clarification of the construction. I don't think there's gonna be a whole lot of difference in the systems.
He only said the ten thousand plus the two thousand, so it was always a standard.
But we're definitely gonna have to work through that and figure out where to go. And if you're gonna propose a pull-off here on the road, we're definitely gonna need the road commissioners, at that point.
Yep.
Cause there is definitely limited drainage there, there's no swells.
Other than the one that the road commissioner made?
Yeah. And then. And there's also gonna be a concern of snow. At that point. Can't even really know from the chief how big it is, so I don't believe he's made any moves, how big of a pull-off area he's gonna make. Six feet of level ground around the driver's permission. Ballads. Oh, it's requirement six feet of level ground, I think the new one might add to a little more dimensions. But again, we're gonna need to believe his input, road commission is input. Because, and then we still, we're waiting for the road commissioners input on if you wanted drainage in there. So.
Yeah, I have not heard anything.
No, we haven't, so if we put a cistern inside that, maybe.
Is where, how far off the edge of pavement that way is the property on?
Uh, it's a sixty-six foot right away, um, so it's about thirteen, thirty. Cause. Each third, yeah, so twenty feet.
So you get. Just because we've never had this come up before, I believe these cisterns would have to go on private property, uh, town property. So now it's gonna be a question of the size and how much pull that the fire chief wants. Access. And you're proposing six, twenty-six thousand gallons of tank, right? It says probably gonna be, I guess, probably gonna end up around thirty thousand.
Yeah, probably.
Does it have the same dates?
Yeah, I suggested, you know, we have fire pond right there, but.
What?
Yeah, this is like a need.
So the draft. Is this different than this one?
This is the draft that he sent out the other day, they have the same dates on it, that's why I put that on there.
So this is for Russ?
I thought you wanted one?
But I think.
Yeah, I think that's certainly, uh, a point that I can bring up.
But, I think, yeah, that's certainly, uh, a point that I can bring up.
Yeah, we just, we're gonna definitely have to discuss.
He needs the draft.
Yep.
The whole, uh, we have. And I don't think, we've had cisterns, but they've never been on the public right-of-way.
She just worked great.
Yep.
But there's always been a, a road, proposed road.
So that we shouldn't be looking.
Sure.
So, the access and all that's been a little different.
Mm-hmm.
You want me to shut up?
Fine, listen.
Gotcha. I got it.
Because I don't know if I'm gonna get a permit on the thing. I, I am, because Andy's fucking quiet, Andy is quiet tonight.
Is he?
Yeah. Okay, so this is.
Again, I don't think there's many changes on there, it's mostly just clarifications.
Yeah.
Some of this, that's what we're gonna talk about tonight.
Mm-hmm.
What went on?
So do we have locations for where those cisterns would be?
No, that's, and if they're gonna be along the existing roadway, now we're getting there.
Then we just gotta fill drainage, swales and all that, for the fire truck to get off.
Right, that's. You gotta have a pull-off.
Yeah, the pull-off and.
I believe they'd have to be on private property, the town's not gonna want them on their property.
Yeah, who maintains them?
The developer for five years.
And/or homeowners association, yeah.
So we're gonna need drainage, because there's not really a drainage system there. You're gonna need a pave pull-off, then there's the discussion who's gonna make sure it's flat.
Yeah.
Because we've never, these have always, anytime we've done them, they've always been on a subdivision road.
Yeah.
It's new construction.
Yeah, just trying to picture that, and you almost have to run culvert now, from all the way down the road, then fill over the top of culverts.
Right. I would guess you, you'd probably be seventy feet long from tip to tip, you come in. Probably almost need fifty feet of flat in front of it.
Mm-hmm.
So we're gonna need some road commissioner input.
Yeah, then snowwork over.
And then some.
Fifty feet of what?
Well, you gotta have enough room, you gotta come in with it, you gotta come in with your taper. And then you need a flat spot so the truck can pull up next to it and then back out.
Yep.
And we're gonna get from the town right-of-way on your private property at that spot. So you're probably gonna be, what'd we say, the, you had sixty-six feet of road there?
Mm-hmm.
So even if we're in the middle, you take off twelve, you have forty-four feet, right, no, sorry, you're gonna have twenty-two feet.
Twenty-two feet.
Twenty-two feet from this edge of road to the town right-of-way.
Yep.
And then you'd need the additional, then it would be a question of whether that, the pull-off could be in the town right-of-way.
Mm-hmm.
And then the tanks would have to be on that.
Sure. Yeah, I mean, whatever we end up going with for the department, um, you know, would necessitate an easement for their use of that, um, or their access, however, you know, that comes about.
Yeah, and then you're gonna have that paved surface in the town right-of-way. That, right, that pull-off, I, I'm assuming you're not gonna pull the trucks all the way into here.
No.
So they're, they're gonna probably be sitting in the town right-of-way, the cisterns are now part of the property.
Yep.
So now there's also the maintenance of that pull-off, right? Now you've, now it's become, you've got this paved surface, it's now part of the town road system.
Mm-hmm.
So we, we really, if that's where you're going, I think we really need the road commissioner involved. I mean, it's logical, what you're discussing is logical, but it's just how it's handled.
Mm-hmm.
And what the design of it is.
Sure.
Maybe you have other comments, right?
I think you need the road commissioner and chief to say.
Yeah.
Have a scheduled meeting just for that subject area.
Yeah. Because then we're also having private construction within the town right-of-way.
Yep.
So. Which, another one, so I don't believe it's a major issue, but.
Right.
And I mean, to put these in the ground's a major hole.
Yep. Okay.
We're getting through it.
Yep.
Slowly and steady.
Yep.
But I think all your other items were, were pretty much there.
Okay.
Getting through this.
Mm-hmm.
Because by definition, in our opinion, by definition, it's no longer just a right-of-way.
Okay.
And then you know the standards, the union standards.
Yep.
It's not say you can't ask for a waiver, I don't know how the board is, but.
Uh, given the discussion tonight, I'm willing to bet that that's probably a no.
I think just a lot of other reasons, it probably is, if it come back, your future issue.
Well, and especially where the board has already expressed misgivings over shared driveways.
Yes.
I can understand that.
And I think one thing we did ask for the shared driveways that may is, and I think you might check, will they be paved?
Yes.
Because that just kind of eliminates, could eliminate some of the contention.
True. Okay.
All right.
Yeah, like I have some homework.
Yes, now you're stepping away and stepping back, right, we won't be making stand-up.
Um, as a matter of fact, I am, I didn't have a chance to send this off to, uh, Jen, but I don't have my stuff together for the other project because stuff happens. And I couldn't get a spare moment to myself, so, um, so I'm going to, uh, step back and let you guys move on to the next thing.
All right, thanks, then, as always.
Yep. Jen, do you want these?
Yeah, it's okay.
Okay. Figure your mind out.
Yeah, it's okay.
Come on, how many lots, how many lots of your road?
There are a lot, so.
Eight?
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, River Road.
Yeah.
Five.
I don't know yet.
Watching you guys survey it, it's a lot separate.
Yep.
Go ahead, show us up.
Yep, uh, the current guesstimation is we would like four or five on the road. I don't know if that's going to happen just because of the shape of everything and the fact of where the wetlands are.
Yeah.
But that's in progress.
Yeah.
Thank you, everyone.
Got it.
Yeah.
So there you go.
Yeah, so there you go.
Walsh? Yeah, it was a while ago you were here last.
Yes, it was, we had a lot of work to do.
Yet really left off.
So, we had submitted a packet, um, as a sort of pre-op, to start this, to at least start the conversation and go over the sketch plan um, for one seventy-one Bakers Grant, which has a name now, Rainy's Place Subdivision. Um, my name is Kendra Ranzel, by the way, and I'm here representing Alan, Walsh Brothers Developers LLC. Um, so yeah, when we last spoke, we had discussed a sketch plan with you, we wanted to nail down some of the design items before moving forward into full engineering nine. Since then, we have submitted a preliminary application as well as a preliminary plan set. Um, we'd like to go over that tonight, as well as possibly schedule a site walk if the board sees fit. We're hoping to do that this month, so that we're not into December when that happens.
Yeah, let's go through the application.
Sure.
We accept the application. We can move to that.
Yep, um, so, to start, um, the lot, the subject parcel is about twenty-four acres in size. Since we last met, uh, two acres has been conveyed to a direct abutter. That is out parcel two on the proposed plan, I'm sorry. And I have a rendered plan here that wasn't part of our, um, package for all of you. Um, but out parcel two is here, to the southwest of the remainder of the subdivision. And then also since then, um, the existing, uh, mobile home par, mobile home trailer, um, has, a lot has been created and gifted to Alan, who is an immediate family member of, he's the brother of the actual owner of the land. So those two out parcels are not part of the subdivision, so therefore we are a five-lot proposed subdivision. Um, lots one, two, three and four, we are, those will be, you know, residential homes will be proposed on them. And then lot five is just land to be retained by the owner. Um, we came in for sketch plan, actually, I think the original sketch plan you saw, um, had nine lots, so it is in their plans to develop this in the future, um, but for now, on this plan, understanding that the subdivision plan would have to be amended later in order to create more lots, um, this is just land to be retained. Um, part of what we discussed last time was the non-conformance that was happening on the Connors property, which is in a direct abutter, um, we talked about how the right-of-way we were proposing was not going to be fifty feet away from the existing structure there because they were non-conforming. Um, we pushed it as far toward the mobile home, the existing mobile home as possible. Um, and then, in the nick of time, uh, we received, or you received, um, uh, advice from the main municipal association, I believe, um, saying that the way that it was worded, we were actually fine. So we did leave that, that little area of open space there, we needed it for drainage anyway, to be able to propose a culvert underneath the road. So it worked out fine, but that is open space. Um, this is proposed as a private road, um, there will be a homeowners association and they will own and maintain the road as well as this little slipper of open space. Um, we're proposing private septic and individual drilled wells on each lot, except for lot five. Again, that's to be divided in the future, so there's no hope to close there now. Um, we have wetlands, uh, to the north here is a large wetland, which is actually a significant hurdle pool. And then we have wetlands to the west here, this is a lower slope area, I'm sure there's some of these, um, abutting parcels as well. For the significant hurdle pool, um, we are not proposing any impacts. However, the pool does have a two hundred and fifty-foot setback associated with it. You're allowed to develop within that setback, but you can't develop more than twenty-five percent of it, of the portion of the setback that's on your property. Um, in order to, to develop within it, which we're proposing, it's labeled on the subdivision plan or maybe the grading plan, um, you just have to submit an NRPA PBR, um, which we are planning to do after this meeting, if all goes well. Um, and just prove that you're, that you're proposing less than twenty-five percent impact to the buffer.
So with the twenty-five, how many lots could you get on that with the twenty, do you know that, or?
Yeah, we, we'll be proposing, um, I can't remember if this out parcel was counted as a lot when we started that process. Um, so I think it'll be eight total, so three or four more back here. And we, we have run the calculation that we're less than twenty-five percent, yep. And a portion of that development will also be providing treatment for that portion of the future road, so, um, yeah, but we're under twenty-five percent. The road eventually will go up and the cul-de-sac's kind of right here, so your, your lots, your homes will be one, two, probably three, four. Something like that. Um, as far as stormwater treatment, uh, we're proposing less than an acre of impervious. So we are just required to submit a stormwater PBR to the state. Um, as far as DEP standards go, we're not required to treat this portion of the road, however, knowing there's future development coming, once we cross that one acre threshold of impervious, um, we would be required to treat seventy-five percent of the impervious in the right-of-way. And so therefore, we're proposing a wet pond for stormwater treatment and detention of about sixty-four percent of this road. This portion of the road, um, is not treated, however, it is conveyed to a ditch and across culvert. And then water drains down an existing ditch here in the Bakers Grant, right-of-way to a study point on this end. We are proposing improvements to that ditch currently, and you'll see on the grading plan, um, all of the pavement on Bakers Grant Road up at the top of this hill is just cracked and washed out and in really poor condition. It's because all the water from the site just drains across it, there's no, there's no defined ditch there. Um, so we are proposing improvements along Bakers Grant Road as part of that. Which leads me to site distance. This was also discussed previously, um, this is a blind hill, and so the, the further we could push this road to the, uh, west, the better, southwest. Um, however, even with it being as far along this frontage as it is, we're not needing that. The good part about having to fix the ditch is that we're pushing an existing embankment, actually back, we're cutting in to Alan's property here, where you see his proposed tree line. And it will actually allow us to get the required site distance. So it was two birds, one stone, um, I think technically we, we, um, had submitted for a waiver on site distance because we're not meeting it in the existing condition, but in the proposed condition, we will be.
So that will become a town drainage movement thing?
Nope.
Across the front of this property, or?
Uh, no, the ditch is actually within the right-of-way, yeah, so we'd be working within the town right-of-way, but we are significantly improving the situation there. And again, that can be seen on the grading and utility plan, which is. C one oh two. C one oh two, yep. We've done test pits for all of the septic locations, um, as well, we've done actually two test pits on each lot. None of the, so in your standards, um, if there's refusal at twenty-four inches, you have to provide a reserve, a location for a reserved septic, and we did not find either groundwater or ledge within twenty-four inches of any of the test pit locations. Um, so that's, that's why we've only proposed one septic location on each lot. And then we're showing a one hundred-foot setback from those locations with the wells outside, outside of that setback for the well exclusion zone. This grading plan also shows that, um, impact to the hurdle pool buffer, and we're at two thousand seven hundred and two square feet to impact over, I don't know, that's quite large. We're at, I think we're at maybe three percent. Couple of things, just updates since we last spoke, um, Alan has removed his garage.
Yeah.
Not yet.
That was the real one built, I think, I think he did, he took one, take me down.
Okay, so, um, he, he got a building permit for his new garage, constructed that, the old one, which was, would not have been meeting this fifty-foot setback, um, I'm sorry, seventy?
Fifty.
Fifty? Fifty foot, thank you. Um, fifty foot setback, he, he will be removing, demolishing the old shed, the garage, and then there were two sheds that are both gone.
Yeah.
And he also had an existing well, uh, that would have been within fifty feet of this property line, which is not allowed per the lot size coordinates, I believe, and so he has a new drilled well, which meets the setbacks of his new lot lines. We've done some work.
Yeah, we've done some work, you know.
We're also proposing overhead electrical into the site.
Were we discussing that?
We did, yep, and we'll be, um, we're anticipating pole-mounted transformers. But that will all be figured out with CMP and a private company to extend that electrical. But that will all be figured out with CMP and a private company to extend that electrical.
Now, was the wet pond, we have proposed as a fire pond also or?
Yes, so we discussed that with you all.
Yeah, well, I remember that.
Hoping that that is still, we've gone through one hundred percent engineering design. So hoping that we can still, um, we provided thirty-four thousand gallons uh of volume within the permanent pool of the wet pond. So we're over, we're over the requirement. I think the requirement for the number of lots was twenty-eight thousand. Um, it just worked out that what we needed for stormwater gave us more than.
Now, will that be large enough to cover the, for future homes?
Yep, that covers up to nine, I believe nine ones.
Okay, just so we're not back to the table again trying to figure that out.
They also asked us if, um, when I spoke to Larry in that spot, if the town ever needed that access, that we will find that if there was a fire, maybe.
Oh, for some, yeah, used for other, yeah.
And those, those requirements didn't change between this letter and, you know, the access, how, how the, the connections go.
Yeah, we have a detail um for the dry hydrant along with several details for the wet ponds. You can see how that's all uh being proposed.
Now, is it lined or was it an optional line?
It is lined.
Okay.
Yep, it's lined with an HGP E liner. I, I was just telling them, I don't spec clay liners anymore because they fail all the time. And it's really hard to find the right clay unless you have it by some miracle on site. It's just way too much of a, of a hassle to try to find the correct material for that. So we use that HGP liners. And I find that they're much better, a little bit more expensive, but that's also why the whole thing's rip wrapped. It's difficult to play sand over an HGP E liner in three to one slope, so we just go around over. Another thing, I did list out the waivers in the cover letter right at the beginning. One was for the high intensity soil survey. As I mentioned, we've done nine test pits. We'll have to submit eight HGV hundred swarms to both you and the state for the septic fields. And our findings in the field match the medium intensity soil survey that we provided within this, which is an online, um, it's through web soil survey through the USDA. So that's why we're asking for a waiver from the high intensity soil survey. I can go through the others, or if you wanna um discuss any of these, I'm, I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Now, have you had a discussion with the fire chief on that already?
We did, yeah, yeah. I, I noticed, um, it wasn't included as part of the preliminary plan application, but we had provided it with our sketch plan packet, emails with the fire chief discussing the hammerhead turnaround. And the, he was happy with that. It's, it's designed to be able to accommodate a ladder truck, pumper truck. And the other thing is that in the future, if these lots get built out, we would be proposing a cul-de-sac. And that hammerhead would either stay, which is kind of nice when you have a dead end road, to have another means of turnaround. Or this, this lot would be reconfigured to get rid of it. But I, I think they're nice to have, especially for planning.
And you said the site distances, you would go away with the, the China improvements?
Yes, I, I did include it as a waiver, just because in the current condition it's not. Another thing I noticed is not in here for a waiver, is, that we did discuss, was the width of the gravel shoulders is required at five feet on both sides. And just in an effort to reduce the amount of impervious area, we, I believe we designed them at two feet wide, which is pretty typical for almost any road I've designed. So we just, I guess we will be asking for a waiver from that standard as well, that roadway standard. The pavement width is, is twenty, yeah, two ten foot lanes. Let me just call it out here, it's a grass shoulder, but let me check with detail, make sure that's. Yeah, I think it's gravel, so that note is incorrect. Every time with my red pen.
And you just, your last waiver request is just your improvement and the grab needs?
Yeah, there, we have, we have them all, so we, survey has done their part where we described them all. Like, we have a legal description for all of them. We just, their attorney was on vacation right before we submitted this for two weeks. And so we have to, we're just hoping we can supply that before final approval. But we fully intend to do that. Homeowners association documents, either that or road association. I think, I think Alan was, I mean, um, Larry was planning on a HOA, yeah. So the draft HOA docs, um, including maintenance and access for the wet pond, the amusement over lot one, and the open space and the right of way. So future build, I'm looking at this now, net residential, net res calc show an allowable eight lots. So it would be, this would turn into three. Oh no, four, sorry, again, lot five would be split from one to four.
First have to, I mean, this is definitely a private road, so we're gonna need something. We have a word in it, like in the deed or, not to go back to another subdivision where after the fact they committed on it, accepted by the town. For this one, because this is gonna be too small, it's gonna have to clearly be understood.
That it's, that's remain private for perpetuity.
Remain private with what you're proposing.
We can put a note on the plan if you like.
Yeah, we're just gonna need something, it's gonna, probably gonna in the draft deed you show us, it should be in there somehow, not quite sure the wording. But it's a habit, you know, when you build a road, a subdivision, so uh, you can bring it to the town and be accepted. Right, but they've come back looking at the approvals down the road and all that.
So we can put it in, we'll put in the HOA docs and then add a note on the subdivision plan.
Because you definitely build it to private standards, the twenty foot width and uh and it's more just for maybe standing for people like I am, so they're gonna come back to us and asking us to plead their case to approve it.
Yeah, not a problem.
Kind of goes back to that shit driveway thing too, the things that have come back to us.
Uh, that's another note, I, we, we did discuss last time, but Alan's driveway here will be moving to come off the, the right of way, just so you're aware, to go to his new garage. And then, um, just to be clear, and this is within the deed for DJ Smith. He does not have access to this lot from the new right of way. He has to access it through his current property.
Are you showing, there's gonna be no, these lots, where these buildings are going, are these proposed? Or are they gonna have the option to build anywhere on the lots they want or?
Within the building envelope.
Yeah, so in the building, okay.
Yep.
Because there's nothing restraining him from it, there's no lot lands, there's nothing else.
No, there, and are, some of the building envelopes, you'll see, and what you're not seeing on this plan, but you can see on the grading, this, it slopes way down. And so there's, no one's building a house back here, unless they want to spend a million dollars on a driveway and fill. But like this one, you know, your step, your building setback is twenty-five feet off the wetland. So that's what determine that one. Um, and then here, you've got a little bit of that going on to balance lot.
Oh, that's good, so you got a nice large envelope on it anyway, so. We've got, this is better than most we've seen lately, usually it's real tight.
It's, honestly, it's, as far as wetlands go, it's great. Ledge is what you're gonna be struggling with, so if you don't have one, you have the other, right? But we did, um, in an effort, you know, understanding there is ledge out here, we, but I was pleasantly surprised by the test pits not being within two feet. Is it okay? I mean, there's, yeah, where you're gonna get into it, I think, is up here because there's, if you look at the grading plan, you can see like two noles. I think that's probably ledge. But anyway, we made it a fill, it's a fill, so, for that reason. Just so you don't have to go too far down with the gravel base and have to blast.
Do you have any cushions on the design or?
Our erosion control is shown on the grading plan, if you're looking for it. We do have, um, stone check dams on every other contour, all the way down the ditches on both sides of the road. Riprap, aprons, there, we also propose filter berm to protect any water flowing offsite away from the developed area. That's our FB um, line type is. Yeah, we can.
Now, is the plan to have, would you be providing construction inspection services or? If something this size is definitely, we're gonna want third party inspection, whether it's SEBAGO providing letters and ASVIL plans that everything is constructed correctly or if that's not the plan, we need a third party engineer at that point?
Yeah, we typically, so, we always put it, put it within our proposals to our clients that we'll inspect the wet pond, uh, construction fully, um, probably the other four or five times while this is being constructed. And we take photos and notes and then we put together an inspection report. We'll need all of that anyway for when this becomes a DEP permit later. They'll wanna know that this was constructed accurately. Um, so that we always do. We don't have, right now, we haven't discussed, um, inspection of the roadway being put in. But we, if you require an ASVIL plan, then we certainly can survey it once it's done or we can, if you require compaction tests.
And it's a fairly sizable project, erosion control, we'd be concerned about. And just concerned that it's constructed for a third plan.
Yeah, um, but as far as, like, we don't need to cor, it's a private road, so we don't need cores and.
No, we just like somebody to look at and make sure the right amount of gravel is going in.
Yep.
Visually, the right amount of pavement's going in.
Yes, I would like to ensure that as well. So, uh, we can do that, I don't, do you want that documented anywhere or?
We're gonna, we're gonna need it, yes, because it'd have to be at some point, whether it's in the, during the pre-construction or part of the plans, whether it's SEBAGO or somebody else, we're gonna need that information.
We should have a note, I think we have a note on the wet pond, just as far as documentation right now. I think we have a note on the wet pond detail that talks about inspection requirements. And this is a really fun page, the erosion control plan, which is a literal sheet of notes, also talks about our inspection requirements, so it's in there.
Okay, and we can give you a list of things we'd wanna see.
After the fact.
Yeah. And just that final letter from you stating everything was built correctly per the plans.
Yep.
Again, just past experience what we run into.
Also, as part of the stormwater report, um, which we had, it's, it's part of the original one too, and this part didn't change, but I did supply you with an, an updated stormwater report. There was discrepancy with the, how the develop, the total developed area was noted as compared to the application form. So what I gave you tonight was, I'm getting ahead of myself, but what I gave you tonight was the application form as well as the revised stormwater report, so that's all cohesive. In the stormwater report, we have an inspection, maintenance, and housekeeping plan, which talks about the requirements of construction of the wet pond as well as maintenance afterward. And I always have people put, the inspection, maintenance, and housekeeping plan as an exhibit within the HOA doc, so the HOA knows exactly what they're responsible for maintaining and how often. So there's more on inspections, especially following construction within that document.
Yes, because the fire chief requires five years and.
Yep, it's, yeah, typically five years. We don't have a DEP permit, so, and there's no town standard for it, but DEP does require, once we get to a DEP permit, we'd be required to submit a fire maintenance agreement with a maintenance company, actually.
There's a lot of notes.
Sorry.
It's all right, better than you.
Have to call in our CYA notes. Uh, private work that would be occurring in the right of way for the ditch, do you need any sort of note to coordinate with?
Road, the road commissioner.
The road commissioner and the code enforcement officer maybe, just prior to that work occurring?
Yes, and we probably should have something constructed to most of, most of the subdivision standards reference main DOT.
Okay, yeah.
So we just cover.
That shouldn't be an issue, it's, the ditch is less than, I think, well, usually minimum slope on ditches is the, is what we will worry about because the water doesn't move fast enough, but I think you're, the worst, you're at like three or three percent or something on the slope, so. Yeah, it's a two to one side slope for that cut. And it has a um inspected erosion control blanket, which is set for two to one. Anything steeper with riprap, but that should be fine for DOT standards.
Yeah. Is there a pave pull off for the dry hydrant? Is that is that what's being proposed or?
No, well, we're just showing a what we're showing there is the gravel shoulder and then we have a bollard protecting the dry hydrant.
Okay.
But we can certainly add they pull off, it's gonna affect the grading a little bit, but.
Well, we can discuss on the fire chief and see if he can gravel or.
Sure.
It's just hard to see if there's a fire area here or.
Yeah, um there's a the plan and profile sheets give you like a zoomed in version of what you're seeing there. So yeah, sheet C two oh one, you can just you can see it a little better cause it's a twenty scale. And we do show driveways for the lots. I think I have a note on there that it was just kind of shown for illustrative purposes only, just to ensure that if they move, we don't have to come back and amend subdivision plan, so.
No, no, we're just being careful in the road and the sight lines are fine.
Yeah.
I don't see that being an issue. And it's you said it'd be noted in the HOA or somewhere that the fire ponds for the benefit of the town also.
We can certainly add that language, yeah.
I think the fire chief will expect that, you know, but he if he has a fire somewhere, he can use the bomb.
So they need access over the midway, yeah.
He has, yeah.
For just town or just in general, town Lebanon?
And he's also cause he's also gonna need the right to go inspect it anyway, so.
Yep.
Looks pretty thorough. A lot of information. Quiz tomorrow, Laura.
Yeah, really. I'm all over it, yeah. Some heavy reading.
I think they have everything stamped, right engineer. I don't see anything yet, but we need a third party engineer, is anybody? And that's one of the reasons why I'm maybe dividing that as built in a letter that everything was constructed for the design. Alright, so we wanna go through the application?
Wait a minute.
Yeah, we're ahead.
Oh parcel number two. Alright, I missed how the description of that was that he has to go through this property, he's not gonna have access for the road itself.
He so this is not his land, it's this, you can see it better on the cover, but yeah.
Oh, I I get this.
Yeah. No, no, no worries. Um so yeah, he I just wanted to be clear, it's not the Connor's lot, it's it's the Smith, it's this lot. Um and so, yes, he he has a home back here, a driveway to access this lot, he has to go through his property. He won't have access rights over the new right of way.
Okay. And never will.
Nope. Nope.
Well, I just see it's, you know.
Yeah, the butts are wrong, yeah.
Right. The butts are wrong, it's got frontage, you may not have.
The price you pay to go will never get off.
Yeah. I mean, I guess he could take it up with the homeowners association if he wanted to in the future.
Because he definitely has, there's enough frontage there, it looks like.
Yeah, he has proper frontage, yeah.
No, it's a new one.
And it's a two acre lot.
Two acres.
Well, sorry. Let's find out. So on the application here, it says acreages to be acreage to be developed four point zero?
Yes.
And then the bucket says one point two, one point three five?
One point three five.
That's because we submitted a revised application to correct the developed area. What where the one point two came from was the area within the right of way. So if you include all of this tree line that's being cleared as part of the lots, we're at four acres.
And the shared area.
Um developed area, cause assuming and it's hard, it's difficult with these because you don't know how big somebody's gonna make their lawn.
Yeah.
So actually what we do, full transparency is when we when we model it to to determine how much flooding control we need with the ponds, we actually assume a percentage of developed area over each lot. And that's somewhere, I think around thirty percent developed area, which if you look at the lots, it's about right what we're showing for the for the tree line. We just try to make it as realistic as possible.
So I guess go back to Michael's question about parcel two now, I look at it here. What is to stop them from putting a house on there and coming off the private road?
I don't think there's.
They don't have rights to it.
Okay.
In within the documents.
Okay.
It's deeded, yeah, in his deed.
Okay.
He has no right to be to access his lot via this road.
Is it would just it looks like a bill of value could be added to the subdivision?
No, and and if he sold it, he couldn't do it within five years. That is part of the subdivision exemption. These lots are exempt from subdivision and as part of the exemption rules. Alan can't sell this lot for five years and neither can TJ, right? Yep.
Hello?
Hi.
Doesn't mean somebody won't bring it to us, that's why we're asking.
Yeah. They'd be they'd be amending, they'd be amending the sub current subdivision to add this as a lot, which wouldn't be hot, but then they'd also have to get access from the owner of the right of way.
Yeah.
Right. But then changes the computation of of a business because it's another. You suppose one or other, okay. I was just wondering what would it then prove?
Right. No, it's just wait, it's another thing that would come back to us.
Same thing for the road.
Yeah. And then can see us and.
I mean, there are some, I suppose, what ifs.
Yeah.
But again, I mean, we did provide more, you you again, if this was presented as a proposal, you'd have to check the facts, but we did provide more than what's required for fire protection, so technically.
And maybe it's something in our facts and findings that L parcel two is not part of the subdivision per se. Just so it's documented. Just so it's documented.
Yeah, that's right.
I mean, we're not worried about Alan's as much because obviously it's, you know, it's a built, it's a lot that's already existing with the house and.
Yep.
So we're not worried about that one.
Sure.
It's just how that's laid there in in the future.
I would, I mean, this is speculation, but I would assume he bought this lot as a buffer between this development and his own, but who knows?
Yeah, oh, sure, I'm sure, but you know, anything can happen, right?
Right, very true.
So. Alright, so we wanna go through the application?
Which one's the correct one?
The loose, the loose application, I'm sorry, yeah.
The one you gave us.
That is and that is the only thing that changed was the developed area. Oh, and sorry, the applicant's address in the first form was incorrect. It is now correct.
Which address is correct for what's on this?
The.
I was yeah, I knew I read last name.
Your your newest application that is loose is is correct.
New application. Okay.
We took uh it upon ourselves to use this opportunity to correct the address.
No, that's fine.
Which we which we realized as soon as we submitted the original application.
So this is received and you know what was the new? This is the one, the loose one, right?
Correct. You go, now you gotta stamp.
Well, I'm just saying because.
Probably a good idea. I know which one's right.
Oh, which address I had on the original.
Michael's been addressed.
Oh, yeah.
Email address for you on the front end, it's almost right now. It's different from the second page.
Yes, my I got married in September, so my name changed and yeah. And then we had to update the agent authorization.
Congratulations.
Real pain. It's a real pain to get married.
It's worse if it was still.
Just gonna say that.
Well, you you said it.
That is not in my future plans.
How big is this whole piece?
It was twenty-four acres to begin with and long story, but we had to figure out a boundary line agreement with this and butter in the beginning. So that lot line changed, that was all taken care of legally. I don't know what it became after that. It was just a sliver of land that had to be fixed. Um and then so twenty-four something minus two.
Four.
Four. So roughly twenty, I think it's nineteen point eight. We can fix that on the final plan because there's a note, general note number three says the old twenty-four point four, so we'll update that to the what's actually being subdivided.
Yeah, are you building the houses or are you just selling the lots?
Selling the lots.
Okay, I was just, cause I was looking at your completion, that's just the road work here. You get spring start, summer finish, just for the road work.
Yeah, the road and the pond.
In the pond, yes, the infrastructure.
Yeah. Yeah.
We're actually hoping for a decent start. December of this year?
Yeah. My promise, we don't need to get into December.
Yeah, that really threw a wrench in our plans.
We get lazy after October.
That's okay, I understand. Hibernation, partial hibernation.
Yeah, that's a good one. He's letting Michael finish, he's got the keen eye for that big work.
I've done it a couple of times.
I just wanna be tried to ring one?
Good stuff.
So will I read before you?
Is there only going coffee?
For the ride home.
You read like. You know what? We should stop requesting audio books. While we drive.
Bring it over newspaper.
We can't warn them, probably.
Morgan Freeman do the voice.
Different voices, voiceovers.
Fall asleep about three miles down the road.
Be the most boring audiobook you're ever listening to.
Size soil conditions.
Just to make sure reflections of it.
Yeah, that could sway on how you get approval on that.
Read it. Alright, so do we wanna make a motion to accept this application as complete?
I'll make the motion to accept Rainey's place, major residential subdivision as complete.
Second. All in favor. Alright, I know Kenber wanted to consider it, he said well.
And waivers.
Well, we don't do the waivers. We don't do the waivers.
Go after.
Yeah. Cause we don't want to, it's from say distance and that, we're gonna wanna actually, we'll see what we're looking at.
Yep.
So is anything staked or laid out or?
We have it on our schedule to do it like immediately, so um.
So come on.
And then we do have to notice first, I walk.
Yes, we have to notice and I promise and I promise daylight and two of us work here.
We do what, two weeks?
Well, the rest of us work, we just work at different things.
We just have different schedules, right. So daylight is an issue for us this time of year. Major.
I'm gonna have to do Saturday, you don't do anything unless you're guys.
I can't do this Saturday, I'm out of town.
I'm out of town this Saturday too. Not a lot more.
Why you weren't that busy when you had the.
Yeah, no, please, what is it with you? Okay, this Saturday, oh yeah, this is.
I'm out of town this.
And I won't be here.
But that's okay, you don't need me. Well, I have plans, but like as long as we do it early.
Five AM?
No, not right.
It's coming.
I'm going to the police.
Are you good? Oh yeah, I heard that, didn't you? Wow, I heard I heard that.
Thank you.
Now you said I heard that, I was told I was free for the next two weekends after that, after this one.
Just so you know, so.
We could do the sixteenth, I guess.
You don't have anything.
I don't, I'm good.
Just letting you know.
Oh yeah, cause you got, you guys have, yes. Yeah, so I guess I'm clear on the sixteenth. It was my real job.
It's with the ladies of Lebanon and Andy. Andy's kind of our backup.
Wanna try for the sixteenth?
I think so.
Well, yeah.
Will you be ready on the sixteenth then?
Oh, yeah.
What time uh what time? We got daylight by sex, so.
Well, we don't have to go that early, but I think I have to be available by noon time, so as far as I know.
Excuse me.
Is this heavily wooded right now or is that a cut or?
That's a big cut.
There's some where the tires used to be, but it's like clear, right?
Yeah, it's not, I mean, it's not a hard wall.
No.
Eight o'clock?
No van.
Eight o'clock on the sixteenth?
Yeah, that's fine.
Eight o'clock.
Alright.
Eight o'clock, sixteenth.
It was just down the road for me, so I should give up five minutes off of leaving.
Um is discussion on some of these waivers appropriate? Just so if the board's feeling like it's gonna be a no, we can do some of that in advance of.
I mean, I.
I don't think there's I don't think there's any there.
The only good, I mean, I had notes going back for the um for the hammerhead, cause that was that was actually in our regulations.
And I think we got, there was a letter from the fire chief.
So we can. We can supply you another copy of the the correspondence, the address of the fire team.
Yes, I was gonna say there was something.
I apologize if that's not in there because.
Yeah, as long as that, the only other one I see a distance is a site distance.
Right, and that's gonna be solved.
And as long as that's solved, that's the only two that I actually saw, I mean, it was.
We struggle with the site distance just cause there is a lot of bad swats in Lebanon and just to create more.
Yeah, it's.
You sure that will take care of that?
Yeah, I I'm certain it will. Yeah, we're we're actually cutting back more than we would have needed to in order to meet site distance. But we had to because to get the ditch in.
I don't see anything other than that, but if we got the the go ahead from the fire chief and the site distance, this is solved and I don't see any.
And the gravel shoulders, does that seem, as long as they're gravel, I'll I'll fix this, no.
Yeah.
But in our detail.
We can discuss, I don't think five foot gravel shoulder, that sounds excessive.
And at the end of the day, it's a private road, but we'll just have to make sure whatever goes into the either on the plan that it can never be adopted by the town.
Yeah, well, well, I know.
Yeah, right, right, just cause it has come back.
Yeah.
But yeah, I don't see any problem with five foot gravel shoulders, it seems excessive.
Okay, and then potentially submitting, we might have time to draft. We'll have to talk to your attorney, but we might have time to draft some of the, now that we have a month until we're gonna be back here. We can submit some of those drafts, whatever we can't get done, we'll cover, could potentially cover with a waiver or ask for a waiver for, but we might have time to now draft some of those easements in the HOA docs. So that might not be a waiver, by the time we get back to you.
Right, it wouldn't necessarily be a waiver because it could be tied to the occupancy anyway, so.
Right.
The time, time break while. Gonna do the site walk in two weeks, or three from this Saturday. Do we have time to get the final application ready for the first meeting in December? Or do we have to hear the comments from the site walk first in December?
They have, we have to hear the comments, I'm assuming, hear the comments in December and then you have to approve the preliminary plan.
Yes.
And then we have to submit a final application.
Right.
And, which we'll do immediately, and then hopefully the January meeting, we would be going for final.
Yeah, hopefully we get the world commissioner to look at way to propose it on the ditch lines, get his input on that.
Yeah, well, I'm happy to correspond right here and then we get this plan to him.
Oh yeah, and we'd have to do a public hearing too.
Yes.
But that could be done ahead of the decisions for the preliminary plan.
Well, we could do the, we could do the preliminary in December and stuff, but we wouldn't be able to schedule the public hearings, so it would be the January meeting.
At the beginning of the next meeting. So you only have a public hearing on the final plan?
Well, it wouldn't be the final plan, but we gotta get through. Normally we'd go through the preliminary stuff, review everything we did on the site walk, schedule the public hearing.
We can't schedule it all for one meeting?
Well, we would, but how are we gonna do a public hearing and, we don't even have any answers. The next meeting's December, right?
Yeah.
So if we have a site walk, you won't even know what we want for changes. So I mean, the next option to do a public hearing is gonna be January.
But if we submit any changes that you want during the site walk, if we submitted prior to the December meeting, within that two weeks?
We don't meet and can't have, we'd have to have a meeting to discuss if we were to.
We can't discuss it there, it has to be discussed here.
Yeah.
Okay.
And, we'd have to have a meeting to set up a public hearing after we have that submitted.
So. So, do you typically require two public hearings, one for preliminary, one for final, or just one?
But we did. No, no, so if we get through the December meeting, accept everything we did, we have the public hearing in January, the January meeting.
Can we submit the final application prior to that?
Yeah, you can, and we could possibly approve it in January.
So you can, you can approve the preliminary plan and then have the public hearing in January, is the potential?
No, we have to have a public hearing.
Went before the January meeting.
Yes, yes.
But if we had a final plan in January, there's the possibility we could be done, but.
We, you know, honestly, we've, we've approved plans after a public hearing.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, we can, we're gonna have you at the regular meeting after the public hearing.
Yeah.
So if everything is addressed and we've been through everything and we feel it's complete, we could possibly approve it at the January meeting.
The final.
The final.
Yes, okay, that, I'm understanding correctly, yes, okay.
And so we, I still can't build the logging road yet, right? I still have to wait.
You can't stump it?
No.
You can clear because you have a permit to clear, but you can't disturb the soil.
Yes, but the issue is the, the.
They can't get their permit.
The life of the log once you cut it, i- is not.
Yeah, so then you should wait until January.
Yeah, but, just to go back on erosion control, I mean, you can't, you can't log, stump this site.
No.
And then come in with your earthwork contractor and put the erosion control in.
No.
Right, I mean, that's the wrong way. I mean, normally you just log this piece of land, you don't need to stump it to log it.
Yeah, he understands, he can't disturb the soil, I mean, no, no stumping could occur or growing, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, but I believe what your tree guy said was to, to access the back, to get the trees he needs, he has to build a road because, so understanding that now, you need your permit prior to him building a road to clearing the, it's all gonna be one fellow.
Yeah.
I think we're all set?
Yeah, I think we'll see in two weeks, have a segue.
Okay. Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You guys must be safe, sit through all that.
No, we're getting hungry though.
All kind of stuff up here.
Yeah.
I can throw you something if you don't tell them.
No. That's okay, I have to do that there, you've been waiting long enough.
I'm assuming.
We have to go over what we're.
I'm not sure. No, no.
This is from March of twenty-four.
Yeah, then you have a name, it's a new one's going along.
I think so.
Thank you.
Oh no.
I have to, my security.
No, this other one's March of twenty-four.
You want this open or shut?
Shut this.
Shut it.
Yeah.
Yeah, this, so this one's what, this one's ours?
Which one, March of twenty-four?
Yeah.
I'd say so.
I can't fit all this in my bag yet.
This is a pre, yeah, this is pre. So.
I'm giving Buck just scanning everything.
We have more time than I do, Steve.
Well, it's because he's retired again.
Laura's scanner.
Oh, yeah, that's it.
I'm gonna go from the last page.
Michael, get him hold it up when you do that. Carbage?
Carbage.
Carbage.
March of twenty-four.
Alright, we ready to move on to Simone?
Yep.
Yep.
Alright. Oh boy, that one has been a while.
Yep.
Yeah, it says.
Yeah.
They're busy, yeah. So, again, for the record, I'm Simone Barbarian and I'm the managing member of Barbarian Enterprises, I'll see the loans this. And this is Joe Smith Nelson and Nixon, excuse me. And he's here to just gather questions for Jacob as he's on his honeymoon today. He left, he left Saturday, Sunday. So Jacob did have a chance to talk with the building, the fire chief. He, he has gone over the plans with the cistern, that was the only question really that he had, was putting in the ten thousand gallon cistern and the additional two thousand gallons and of course sprinklers for the sub division. This here, we did move, we did change the location and what we're hoping for is to use the, the red is the new placement and to use a driveway, make a driveway that comes off Upper Guinea for one of the buildings for two units. And then have another driveway here that would access back property and this one here. Okay, this is all in one condo association. We meet all the setbacks, we meet, we have a place right here for the cistern. This is what the fire chief put in here, so we have room right in here for the cistern, stays right away from the the wells and the septics. We have existing well now, we're hoping to use, if not, then we're probably gonna throw them right in the same area. If you notice on that in the front, and we have two proposed wells in the back. Then, besides that, I believe you might have some questions on condo, any condo questions that you might have that I could answer or down is, and I believe you were gonna speak with the main condo association department, I don't know the exact words.
It was the main municipal association and the day legal team.
Okay.
And honestly, I have not been approached with you, there's been a lot of other situations.
Okay, so you have no answers, so you have no questions.
So, the the ones that were submitted, you said that those weren't for the plans weren't for the condos in New, mainly they were for in New Hampshire. Isn't that what you said?
No.
What was on there?
No, everything in here is for what I sent you is for you're saying what I sent you for the condo association is all for the Hampshire? No. I'm sure so.
I thought that's what I thought, I thought that's what you said.
No, fair enough, no apologies necessary.
It's the ones in Berwick were, as in the.
Oh, no, oh, what the, no, what you wanted from me was to show you an area where that he had built in.
Right, with how it was set up and the.
How the condo association was set up?
How that was set up and how the properties were set up, because you said they were sharing wells and septics and how their covenants and everything were worked out.
Yeah, but that, like you said, that was for New Hampshire, you didn't want that one?
Right, we thought we were gonna see some draft documents, because we definitely.
Well, this is our draft, this is our draft.
Okay, but we're definitely, we're definitely gonna need to have a legal review, we've never dealt with condos per se in this manner. So we need to just, we need our legal counsel to review it.
Well, this is, this is, I apologize.
No.
This is here, just a draft and what it is, it's whatever you want. Whatever you, whatever you.
Right, and like I'm saying, we've never dealt with it, so we're gonna need some, we need some assistance with this one.
Yeah.
Now, is there going to be a site plan, or I see you got Savado Technics is listed here, is there, is there gonna be a drawing provided?
Yes, I mean, but we haven't even.
No, no, I understand, you don't wanna waste engineer money, just wanna lose a question.
Yeah, 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 oh, they'll be, oh yeah. They do a good job, as you say.
Yes, this is just a concept.
Yeah, that's a concept and.
Yes.
They do a great job.
No, that's fine, working through the preliminaries like that.
Yeah.
Cause we, we just have some questions on ownership and, and we're gonna need some questions for code and and this will be an HOA, right? Is that what you're gonna list?
Well, it's condo association, it's a condo association, condo meant condo association, not a homeowners association. It's a condo association, since it is a condo. Um, yeah, so homeowners is basically when they own their own land and they share drives and things like that. That you don't.
Yes, yes, we have. And again, you got shared drives, multiple owners and.
Yeah, and I had one building, one septic, one well for each unit.
Yes.
Fire suppression, then I had, they're gonna be rentals.
No, no, they're not gonna be rentals, they're, they're gonna be sold individually, but we won't allow more than fifty percent rental, so there won't be anyone free rented at one time. And we do that mostly because when you have a condo, so when you have a condo, it's hard to get financing if you have more than fifty percent of those units rented. So we don't allow that simply for, this is big, this is for so people can afford to live in homes. And that's why we want to do it, so we don't wanna add any of that extra burden on to.
And then the fire chief.
Yeah, he gave it.
He's made some draft.
Yeah, he did, right here, he made his comment, and then we're, right here where he wants that, we have the right space on this new concept. The new one, this is where the old, the yellow was where the old units were. And then we figured to lessen it out and to give more privacy, so we would come off here so that you have space, and then you'd come off here, so this house would be facing this way, this would be here, or thereabouts, you know, and then this would be off to the back, so if we had this one driveway coming here and then just share there. What we still need to have, it's a condo association, so there's always gonna be multiple people on a road, really, because it's a condo association.
Yeah.
But we're trying to make it as private and as individual as possible and make them look, you know, like regular homes and not a condo, it's not gonna, I don't wanna box out there, I gotta have my name on it.
Yeah.
You know, go ahead, I, you do have a question?
So I have the Eastwood condominiums, I have their declaration for their condo thing, but for them, they, their entranceway is, it's a road.
It's a, right, that's, and that's, you asked for what he has been involved in, and that's what he hasn't been involved in in.
He has the east.
Yeah, he, oh, he did those, he built all those homes.
On tour two, here?
No, 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 no.
That's, I'm saying, I have.
This is why they missed out on, right.
Oh.
Previously, right.
I didn't see that one, I don't have a copy of that.
I'm just, I have it, I can send it to you.
That'd be great, so, and I can, and I can use some of that.
So did we have a, did we have the condo agreement, the association agreement with that, or, I mean, I came in like when that was voted on.
Right, so we have.
And I'm the only one that was even involved in it at all.
A copy that they submitted that they were, they were gonna use, it was never recorded.
Right. Right, now it's, now it's not even condominiums, right? We don't believe, or.
They haven't written out condos.
That won't happen, not gonna happen here, that is not gonna happen here, and I will put it in the deed, and I will put it in the home, that's not gonna happen here. I'm not gonna turn it into, oh, sorry, no, it's not gonna be that. Absolutely not, I built the house on the left, I built the house on the right, we've got two great vets living there, this is gonna be so that, I mean, a lot of people are veterans, they're you know, you know, that's not gonna be.
And we just wanna make sure.
That house was a mess and that's why that house has been torn down, I'm not gonna have that crap. And I tried, but the gentleman that was gonna buy it, like.
And we just wanna make sure what we approved is correct and is also what's going to be.
Oh yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. I, I absolutely, none of us are.
Besides a few legal question, I mean, I think your concept is something we, we believe it works.
Yeah, it does, it does work.
And the, and the main planning has, they provided some comment.
For, but for this, to review contracts and stuff, we'd have to go through regular meetings, and we need to get permission for that because that's
Yeah.
Costs a lot of money.
Right, but I mean, we're, I mean, yeah, so I guess that's a question we're gonna have to ask the slide board.
Right.
Cause I mean, this is.
Or we do the escrow for the review process, so.
Yeah, cause I mean, we'll need an escrow for this anyway, so. Yeah, that's a possibility. I mean, it's definitely above what we have the capabilities to review here.
What do you mean, you don't need escrow, you talking about my wallet? Oh, the town's.
Yeah, we will, we can ask for an escrow as part of this.
From, from me, not, okay.
From you, for any inspections that will be completed above beyond the standard coming by the building. Yeah.
No, no.
And one we may ask is, we may need some escrow, did you notice that document reviewed or approved?
I appreciate the transparency. Did you have that from us too? You know, I wanna, I wanna just write something good, you know, enough people are up there, I mean, I've built other properties for seven hundred and eight hundred, that's fine.
Yeah.
But that's not this problem, that's not this, and it's not gonna be, it's gonna be nice and give people pride. It's not gonna be under the cliche of affordable housing what that is, but it's gonna be affordable. It wasn't the intended original intention.
Right, yeah.
You know, I, I, I can see a plan, I'm not against the plan, I can see the document.
No, we believe, we believe the concept works within the town's regulations.
Did you see these? But this is just a guy.
I see them sitting here, yeah, and I don't see them, you know, spread out on my floor with highlighter running. Saying, why are they saying that?
Right, but I believe, we believe the concept is in front of us, is something we can probably work with. As long as we don't find any legal hurdles that we're missing. You know, that it can't be constructed this way in Lebanon, I don't believe it, because another one has been approved in prior.
Oh, I know it has been approved?
Yeah.
Wondered if it get approved?
That was.
It's the condos.
Yeah, it's two thousand seventeen, I guess two thousand seventeen.
I thought that was just.
No, no, we, as a board, we've never dealt with.
Well, I mean, you know, and we have, the attorney that wrote this, his name is here, and I can retain him. I have not done that because I, I just need to know if we have a go.
Yeah.
And I can retain him, Joseph Carlton, here, he's the one who wrote this, and he's, he's a Maine attorney, and these are from Maine, and if there's anything, those, those documents.
Yeah, I'm gonna email that.
And so in those documents, you approved that, basically what that was? That concept, so if I could take some of that concept and fill in the blanks.
Yeah, in this void, you're not, you know, we, I, no, we. Yeah, in this void, you're not, you know, we, I, nobody in this room has seen that document except Jen, so.
Okay. All right.
So we can't.
So, and I was trying to get that and I just.
Don't worry about it, don't worry about it.
Simone, you're looking from us that, and we agree in concept that this is a possibility.
So do I find out, do I?
That, I think, and you're looking to submit an application is what you need.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
In concept, it works, right, but, you know, unfortunately, that's at a tenth thousand foot view. Right, once we get down into the, the ten foot view, right, it, it could open up a, a few other things that we need to face, right? And it could be on the legality of it, of the application, on what, what we need to put the town through and, and then unfortunately, you know, some, some past behavior of what they said was gonna happen and it didn't happen, right? You know, and unfortunately, so I think it's.
I know, but I can't, I can't, I can't punish the second child.
No, no, but at ten thousand feet, right, this works.
Yeah.
But, you know, now we need to kinda get into details.
Yeah, now we need application from you.
You got it? Um, so, the, um, what, what are the, um, what are the obstacles from this board, this board is, is, it's not, this isn't Berwick, this isn't, you know, uh, any other to Alfred, this isn't Stanford, this is just Berwick, that Lebanon is its own entity. What is the, what are the questions or the concerns from this entity? That I'm gonna, that I can run up against that would displease you, you get what I'm saying? So, what can, what would happen that would, besides not filing the counter documents and having a rental again and, and, and a mess like what happened there?
Also, you know, I'll be honest, right?
Yeah, I like that.
So my, my concern, which one was the fire department.
Yep, he set it up.
Um, second one is, you know, we just talked about shared driveways here a minute ago, right, about having a shared driveway for two units, right? We just did this tonight to another subdivision that we're going through, so that's a concern, right? My, my, another concern is one, one well and one septic for one building.
Mm.
Right, that's a concern, right, so I do have a concern because as I think, as, as individuals who buy these, these, these units, right, these places, right, with the housing market the way it is, it's a lot of money.
Mm.
Right, and then when people get into these and that, you know, little Johnny flushed up a rubber ducky down the toilet and the elderly people living next door now have no water and no septic, right? Who's responsible for that?
I do know the plumbing code says that you can have two, uh, two separate occupancies on the same septic and the same well, provided they have only have one owner. Property.
Oh, okay. Good to know.
Only one owner can.
It, yeah.
That property.
But that's, again.
Both of them, both properties there.
Yeah.
So if the Berwick buildings weren't attached to each other, that, cause it really doesn't matter, but if you got one here and one here and you're both sharing the same septic, both sharing the same water, as long as they're both owned by the same entity, that's okay.
Cause since you own my landlord.
But that's not what this is.
Right.
This is a condo association, so in condos, they are all, I, eight, I, I don't know what the percentage is, but it's almost always.
Yeah.
They should, this is, but this is a condo, it's totally different.
So that's, and then what we need, we need to see in those documents.
It would be on the HOA. It would be on the, so, excuse me, I'm speaking, it would be on the, the condo association. Okay?
I bet you're going.
So when you come back, right, I mean, educate us, right, that's what we're asking, educate.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Yeah, I'll do that. So those questions, and so if I can, yeah, I mean, we don't need to sit here for all these meetings, you have, I mean, I'm sure you'd like to go home at eight fifteen. You know, it's Monday night football.
You can pay it, well.
So, yeah, I'll answer, I'll get those questions answered and I'll, and I'll see how that is taking care of the one septic and the one well. These are oversized, I mean, they have a twenty by, twenty-five foot by fifty foot leach field here.
Yeah, and I don't think it's the capacity, it's how.
No.
It's just like we were talking about the shared driveways. If we approve this, somebody comes back a year from now, why did you approve it this way and they're complaining, blaming the town?
Yeah.
That they let you do something.
Gotcha.
So we just need to cover all that.
And we like to see legal guarantees that the town can't be held responsible for the actions of either the homeowners association or the owners of the property themselves.
Okay, and that'll be covered, I'll make sure that that's covered and, and, uh, make sure it's covered again.
Yeah, it's just concerns, right, you ask.
Yeah, that's, I, I, that's what I want.
Just create concern, right, and ask, that'll be the questions that would come up and, you know, once, you know, if you brought us some documentation that, you know, to to go off what, you know, Steven just said.
Yep.
You know, this is what it is, A, B, and C, and, oh, okay.
Okay.
And I think we oughta request Code to be here one night at least.
And the fire chief.
Yes, and they can ask questions.
Yeah, I would love that.
And also provide their input of our questions.
And, and, yeah, I would love that, and I can get a conceptual, I'll call them, I don't know, they're probably four or six weeks, I don't know, coming to December meeting, but I can make a January meeting.
We'd be looking for, where this is a the type of development is, we'd be looking at some kind of third party inspection, at least for the site work portion. In that.
What do you mean by third party?
It just is like we were talking to Mr. Walsh, having Savago Technics provide.
Oh, yeah.
Provide inspections and a final letter saying it was built.
Hundred percent, yeah, that's just, you know what, that's a CY for me.
Yeah, and then it would be a question from Code if he needs any assistance with any type of inspection.
Absolutely. Yeah.
So those are the kind of questions we're.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
That we're gonna need help with, just where we haven't dealt with anything like this before.
All right, and who is it that maybe I can call or who can I contact, cause you have a lot to do. And, and Joe's here as our support. So what can we do on our end to get, make those phone calls, get you what you need?
So, I need to talk to the select board as far as if we're gonna send the contracts to Eagle. So that's not anything, it's not anything.
But that was the main association, or was it any of that again, I mean?
MIA, but they won't do.
They don't get a review upon that.
Sell divisions, but they won't do condos or associations.
So who, who is in main for the condos?
It'll be our attorney.
It'll be our attorney that will review those documents.
Yeah, I'll make a phone call too, to see, uh, if there's another board, if, if, there's no other board to cover. I'll, I'll find out, I'll find out.
This is it, this is it.
Well, the only guarantee.
No, I meant statewide board.
Ah, and if there is, yes, we're right, he's saying that information.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, okay.
We, we definitely need guidance, yeah.
Yeah, team, I mean, yeah.
I'm sure in the documents, it has to be some sort of guarantee that since you're gonna sell these as condos, that the developer has some participation in it until it gets turned over to the condo association.
Always, yeah, so usually two years.
Right, yeah. Like, like, just, but not seeing the documents, I don't see it there and I'm just, you know.
And maybe for our own, for Jen, you could pull the facts in.
Maybe, but I can do it too, I'll, I'll, I'm gonna get that done.
And so we could see this in the board.
So if they're being sold and I get that done, I will say that that person is not.
Highlight some people and. Highlight some of these items and then email it. And then you feel that.
Savago Technics.
If they're being sold individually.
Oh, no, they, they did the plan.
For the whole, yeah, but for the rest of the process, too.
Well, I wanna get this done first, not spend my money, but I.
Yeah, that's true.
I, I mean, they, they, to come to a meeting, it's, it's five hundred dollars.
Yeah. And there's three buildings, and I go on by the frame?
I, I don't, I don't.
No, we're gonna try to help you as much as we can, but we have women acknowledge us, you know, this type of building.
So don't tell them.
Sorry, I'm trying to roll it over, I'm kinda just, yeah, and let's see. I mean, let's see what we can do, you know? We've got two people already, two vets already from the shipyard that already wanna.
Yeah, no, and if you have, if you have any documentation stuff you can send over to Jen.
And that's on him, you know, him is, he has all that, um, because he's done, he and, um, Jacob have done this before, Jacob has, and he's, he's helped with Jacob.
It would also, if we had that stuff we could look over, it might give us more questions we oughta ask.
Okay, so I'll get that emailed over to you and highlighted and whatever I can get. All right, I wanna, all right. I lost it. Do too much.
Give over or outside Laura.
It is.
Okay, so we're all set, sign us to you tonight, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so I can submit my, yeah.
Take some candy, please. We aren't, we're eating.
So much for supper.
Haven't eaten yet.
Good night.
Good night.
And maybe we can look at those Eastwood documents and just see what was approved. Cause I was like at the final moment.
Jen brought up a point, I mean.
Yeah, there is, yeah. All of that is, yeah, and just, how is it controlled? Cause obviously, Eastwood didn't go as approved.
Didn't that?
We don't believe Eastwood was ever constructed as it was approved by the planning board.
Right, it was supposed to be sold individually and one person.
Didn't they almost come, come to a halt though?
They can't, they, it was cantons and fences.
Cause Kurt was gonna look at mine and throw it one time.
Yeah.
So just, how we control that so it doesn't.
How can you?
Right, yeah, I have no idea.
Probably can't.
And then they sell.
No boss, no?
He's sleeping, he's sleeping.
Did you leave in the, did you leave in the car?
I just told him, Joe, no, he actually.
Was he, was he sleeping in the car?
He called a few minutes ago and I'm like, just saying, hold on.
She just made it nine minutes and we could've just told her she'd have to come back, right?
I figured he's sleeping, he fell asleep in the car and he just left him there, snuck out.
He's sleeping at home at this point.
Left the heat on.
Yeah, turn the heat on.
Frank it right up.
Yeah. All right.
Blue Rose.
Blue Rose.
Blue Rose. Blue Rose, all right, so we had our sidewalk.
Good.
Yeah, we saw it.
We saw it.
Nice and neat, John got a little ahead of himself, but it was nice and neat.
He fixed it.
It was nice and neat.
Thank you so much. That'd work.
Oh, we had pads, yeah, we had ready to go.
Yeah, yeah, you saw the pictures.
He's ready, yeah.
He, he would have poured it if he was allowed.
I'm surprised it wasn't.
No, it must be, it was, it was a struggle to, to not make that happen.
All right, so we accepted the application, we've done our sidewalk. Anybody have any comments on the sidewalk?
I think it looks good.
Yeah.
I don't think nice job doing what you shouldn't have done.
And I, I mean, yeah, I know we had a couple of comments, one was a little bit of origin control by the pond, which is nice, okay?
Done. Done the next day, it was done Monday.
And then, um, the dumpster, we know he said he's gonna have a dumpster.
He is going to move it and then he'll put that white fence up, so we'll take pictures after the fact.
Yeah, we just need a spot on the drawing.
Yep, he did slide it over just a little bit, not a lot of it.
Um, I think that's about all we had.
Do, I mean, some for fire suppressors, Frank, why do I have that?
The fire pond was the determination to be sufficient for building seventeen blue rows. And then it was a fire suppression system for all of the duplexes down in there, um, so the fire pond.
And that was, and that was because there were duplexes, right?
Well, it was because it was done ass backwards.
Yes, that's for sure.
Yeah, it's plain enough.
So he had, yeah, he had the first duplex put in, and then he was, shouldn't have been approved for the second duplex, but he was. So the second duplex should have been required to have a suppression system, but it didn't. So that came up in play when he had to go through subdivision and planning board to put in seventeen blue rows. The first one shouldn't have anyway, cause it was a duplex in a shed wall. So, okay, so the first and second, so at the third house he put in there is when the pond was put down after working with chief. So, yeah. And here we are. And here we are. Getting everything.
Now we have two sheds and a garage.
Two?
Well, yeah, one shed, one garage and one office.
A garage and a shed.
Yeah, garage, garage.
Yeah.
Office, yeah. Two sheds and an office. Ew, whatever.
On a previously approved subdivision, kind of.
Kind of, sort of, but then, yeah.
I remember coffee, normally.
Yeah.
Oh, he is, he is, we're in that.
It was a great set of plans.
All right, so Jen had sent over the.
This was the original, the original after.
Originals for Jen, actually, we've got three on the side.
The original after the fact.
So I just made a smaller copy if we need bigger ones, I'm more than happy to come and check and see if they can make that.
All right, what do we got?
So eighteen blue rows, existing lot, the garage being there, to the left of the garage being the twenty by twenty-four addition. To the right of the garage is that thirty feet, and then he'll put that twenty-four by twenty-four shed. Yeah, I was trying to get him to put a much bigger ceiling in there to make it beneficial for myself later on in life, like turn it into a garage or a lift. He wouldn't let me do it, so. From the shed to his setback on that side is fifty-two, cause that's the shorter side of his property. And then the back part, he's got seventy-eight to his property line. His well. And then he moved the dumpster over.
Yeah, so is that an actual fire pond, is there a dry hydrant or is it just a pond?
Pond.
I was going, that's why I was going back looks.
Pond.
So it's just a pond. I, I didn't remember seeing a dry hydrant, that's why I was.
I don't, I don't think.
And it doesn't show on the splint?
Yeah.
Dry hydrant, does he need a dry hydrant with the pond?
No, if you come out from Chief saying, no, I guess it.
Okay.
I don't, I don't remember. The pond wasn't there while we went to the sidewalk, right, when we, for this.
The first time?
No.
Cause that's where we had donuts, wasn't it?
Nice dog.
Yeah.
I'm gonna go, I'm gonna go land a lion in that thing, right? I don't know, I mean, we're.
The boat.
No, we know the two, we know the three buildings now all have fire suppression.
No, the pond is their fire suppression.
So they had come suck out of the pond and use the fire truck.
So the, yeah, the fire truck would use, yeah.
Whatever's water's in the pond.
Yeah, with no dry hydrant.
No.
Where am I supposed to build?
Eighteen, yeah, it would, eighteen was one of them.
So neither one would've been sprinkled or any of that?
Not of them, not a one. The.
Before I.
The person who used to work for John Julie, the insurance company, said that they could have, um, what do you call those things, fire extinguishers? Since the thing was good, because they had to have something, you couldn't sit there and completely come down or whatever, that's what she said.
Okay.
But, it's been a.
It's passed us.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I mean, this, these buildings won't be required to have fire suppression anyway, right?
What the?
The garage, the garage and the office.
No, no, no. No, no, no.
So, so this is already a.
So that's not a problem.
No. Could be though.
Well, I, I, no, I know, I mean it's.
You know something John told, I asked him, he told me, I can't remember what it was, but it's, it was, it's far enough.
It's far enough?
Yeah.
From what property line?
The septic from the line.
The back, from the back, it's definitely over fifty, easy, and then from the side, it's fifty, seventy, a hundred and something or more on, on the right side there.
And we had a septic design, so.
And there is a new updated septic design, correct, yeah?
Now this plan shows a fire pond.
What is it?
The septic plant.
Okay, what is that? Which one was that?
Septic plant, the application.
Which was done after the, um, I don't want to go over this here, oh yeah.
I can draw and. Fire pond.
Do you want to do that? To show the water.
Oh, yeah.
Blue please.
Fire pond, yeah.
Dark, can you say?
No, dark, we have dark there, we didn't really talk, there was a couple of dark.
One on each side.
Yes, very nice.
You guys have to, I mean, that.
I don't know.
Very much, Jerry.
I'm just.
Make a motion, don't you say?
Do you want to put a, you want to put the fire pond on yours low handed?
It doesn't matter.
Okay, it's on the septic design.
Oh, is that, uh, this will be updated, what's on there, say here?
Yeah, this one, yeah, this one, just shows the dumpster, the liquid, the second, the shed, the garage.
Can you draw that over the, uh, seal line?
It fits right in there.
Yep, okay. It is.
Or, can you draw that on there?
No.
Come on, give me a blue marker.
No, we get, she needs a green one for the boat too.
Yeah.
She needs, we just need a green one for the boat.
I mean, I think, I think the biggest part of this whole thing was making sure this was never considered a living space, right?
Well, I think that's.
Right.
And you can see in the backs of finding.
That's, that's.
Yeah, that's our biggest concern, is this doesn't become a rental property.
No, this will not become a rental property, however.
I should say the lawyer said, or you said something.
To put in the facts and findings correct, because.
Yes.
We won't say in our outlaw voice that it was his original intent to just set up right there, however, yes, it is commercial property. It was used for business purposes, so as he did go into his lawyer Sue and Sue advised him that it was not a livable. They just, can't live there, John, can't live there. It's for work, it's for your office, it's for the business.
So if I blow by there in a, in like six months, about two o'clock in the morning, I'm not gonna find somebody coming out with a stocking cap on?
No, no, because I'll be like, John, what are you doing here?
See the TV and through the front windows.
I've already taken all of his documents out of the closet, the attic too.
Maybe we should let him. Wait, for reason for wanting to live there.
He didn't call his wife a witch, like somebody.
Wicked. Oh, she wants to be wicked, wicked nice, wicked, wicked nice.
I mean, I think that's the biggest factor, right?
Is this gonna be included in the files and findings of the law at all?
Yeah.
Yes. Did you write that down?
Yeah.
Oh, he's gonna make a motion, don't worry.
Yeah, and the dumpster, we gotta put, we don't have a, dumpster's gonna be full enclosure privately.
Send a picture and you can put that in those facts and findings, so that way, once it's done, I can tell John that I need to have it completed to send a picture over.
Yeah.
Rodney, you can check that anyway.
Can I have you close your fence out?
That's a.
Yeah, you could.
Yeah.
Make sure we, the dumpster is enclosed and all nine yards before you, this is done.
Yeah.
When they, when they get an occupancy permit, the dumpsters, where it's supposed to be.
Then relocated and.
Enclosed and.
Enclosed.
So we're done.
Yep.
Alright, so anybody wanna make a motion? Well, we've already decided.
I know, yeah.
We're gonna have to stand.
No, that was the old original.
That's the original.
Yeah.
You, you probably just initially.
I don't wanna say it was the old original, but, yeah.
Revision, or, or we could put another signature, that would be revision, revision.
That was.
Yeah, maybe, yeah, revision, yeah.
We're gonna put it in a.
Well, do you want me to put the fire pond on there?
Can you draw it? Can you get it accurate?
We wanna redo it. Should we be seeing it?
You guys need it on there?
Revise.
Oh, I mean, this is.
Okay, this is on the septic thing?
We don't even know where it was built or.
Okay.
If you were next to it, as far as our signatures, revised or whatever, whatever.
Right here, sign, ready to sign that you want to?
Rodney, you just wanna make a motion to approve it?
Yeah.
Go ahead, sorry, sorry, we got to make.
Just ask it.
I know.
So I'll make the motion to approve John Corliss eighteen Blue Rose Lane per plan with a stipulation that no occupancy permit will be granted until the dumpster is in the final location with pictures and included with the findings of fact and closure of law is that the addition, along with the shed, will never become a occupied residence and used for business purposes only.
Oh my goodness.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor? Alright, approved.
So we just wanna sign that, so.
We wanna, we wanna, we're next to the title block, can we sign that again?
Yeah, we can just write revised or something, right? Yeah, and I can click it. Click it, I can put it.
You know what really states, if we're not loud enough, we're trying to go through the meeting.
She knows that, that's why she was trying to tell me to be quiet.
You should put a recorder here, that's what you should have done. You should put your phone here, we just recorded, I think.
I'm not using my phone for. No, cause that opens up other things.
No, audience mind, you set it to file.
You work one, oh yeah.
I can do two, we'll do both.
Why don't we have any?
I don't know, it may happen now, but it was, oh.
Town, the second meeting, not on Monday anyway?
We don't know.
We don't know.
Uh, yeah, it still is.
Is it?
Here's the story.
Were they next door?
I was like, I drove by, when I drove by like six thirty, there was, there was no that.
We were setting up for, um, the election.
Yeah, the lady said like they were around.
Oh, did they move it? I thought they moved it.
No, they didn't, they were on.
They were on elections.
There was on a Tuesday, wasn't it?
Yeah, they were, no, over the place.
And you still don't have any of that?
No.
Uh, leaving by, he sent them out. They gave like, no room is on. No room?
I, I can't, well, sorry.
I guess I'll go under here.
I, I tried to write smaller.
I have mine on master switch, shuts everything off, turns it back on again. Thank you, Bree Slade.
You know what, the way my day's going, I would go in there, something, place would just.
Uh-oh. So we better get Autumn in here.
Yeah.
Oh, I, I don't have to sign.
No. Three.
And who's you?
Oh, I don't sign it.
Oh.
Yeah, she's not here.
You can't go there.
Alright, start over.
Yeah, back up.
Okay, we're good.
We're good. Back some money. Do you need to record it?
I messaged John's wife, told her to let him know we're good to go.
Everyone already?
No, but I messaged, so he don't call me again today.
You can sign it, cause you approved it, you're here now, this is revised, it doesn't.
Oh.
You can still sign it. You want your autograph, you want your autograph.
This is today's autograph.
Yeah, come on.
Alright, thank you guys.
You're welcome, thank you.
Have a good night. You too.
Thanks, Mom.
You got it.
How old are you? Carson Shore, you gotta get through that, right?
Yeah. Oh, you wrote on his, what?
Change, change his ownership again, back to.
Oh, is that the one?
Back to where they were before they were this time of year.
The reason I, I kinda said that during that email was, I couldn't remember. And Michael would know this, did we hold others responsible for all the permits with name changes, meaning, and Wankel I brought up at one time is that.
We are with the one, the one on Upper Crossroad that's never come back, we were telling them that we wanted everything changed.
Oh, and this is why I'm saying that, because I remembered something that we kept changing names and we're like, well, how do we always trace this back? Because the permits and all this other stuff and these letters are in this name, but you got this person over here now that owns it.
So, what his lawyer had said is because name of whatever it is, the, say Lebanon Solar, one, two, three, four, five, six, the permits were under that and not the company he owns them. Is what they were saying.
Uh, depends, I think, it's, uh, permits aren't transferable, transferable from owner from one owner to another. So they would have to, whoever is, they're the legal representative of whatever solar, they're gonna have to come back and get repermitted.
But what stage, what stage of construction is this at? Cause they've started it, right?
No.
Are they, oh, this one's not.
Oh, I'm thinking of that one, yeah.
This one?
Cosens, oh yeah.
Is it done, is, I mean, is it?
They're just about done.
So I. So there goes again the question of permits, I mean, do we know?
I don't know if they have the plantings in, I don't know if the fence has been put in. This is me, right? So now, we go to this point where, say, where three quarters done, who's responsible?
Right. Right.
Because now.
Yeah, now it's a good point.
You're not gonna, well, we did sign everything, so.
Right. Oh, yeah. Right, so are they, are they buying a finished product, I guess would be the next question, or are they?
Has it transferred out to?
So that's the letter they submitted, the one on the back is the one that we had written before. So just so we have, could see what we requested, when they switched back here.
Right at the top, it says intends to acquire, acquire, it doesn't say they have yet.
If you read our letter, I guess we covered the permit thing, right, that basically you own the permits.
Yeah, I mean, so if they haven't actually acquired it, they could, they could wait for whoever building, if they finish building it, then, then get them back. Looks like it's a legal question, no?
Yeah, we don't have any legal help.
Well, I mean, something like that, but I mean, to have them go through contracts, that's, yeah, that's gonna be, that's gonna be pricey.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, and I don't think, I think they're gonna find it, would be my, I mean, but I mean, our letter that Jen wrote the last time, you know, basically saying you own it.
Well, here's the, here's the caveat to that, right? It's, it's like I said, you're going back, right?
Yeah.
So, at the beginning, you know, this other person's gonna take it over now, they didn't have skin in the game at the beginning, right? Because wasn't that.
Well, we don't think they knew.
Right?
We don't assume.
But they said, say this other place is seventy-five percent done, right, and they're gonna take it over. And they could not really finish to what we said, right, to the, stick the lasers we put in, the finds and factors, what we wanted done, per plan.
Yeah.
Because, oh, we're just gonna buy it, and I'm not gonna see that, I'm, that, we got it now. Before, at least, I, I thought we had a little bit of hold to have them actually finish the project. Now, it's like selling a car, you, you know, we gotta rebuild and your three quarter's done and enough.
Pass it on.
Pass it on to somebody else, right? So I think at some point in time, it comes down that you could be held responsible, or, or, yeah, we'll do this, very similar to this, but the, the other paragraph to this on the bottom, the other ballpoint is, is that we need the, the inspection of as built.
Right.
Per plan.
And I mean, and here, we need, we need some kind of letter from them answering Jen's question and saying, we are aware of all the documents, the accident findings, right?
That's what this is.
Right, you wrote it.
No, but the one on the front, is the one they, they asked us to review tonight and I put the one that we did before on the back, is like a reference so you could see what they gave us to what we requested the last time. And if there is something different you wanted to add or take out, and they can rewrite it.
Have we seen any reports or anything on this, have you?
Have I?
Yeah, I know we haven't.
They did this like in, fast, they did it really quick. Ryan would help me on the day for like a final or something, I don't know.
Really?
I really don't care if they have cash or people.
They got three hundred million.
They can buy a van.
You know, for thirty, I would give them anything you want. It does say here that they will, uh, basically abide by the permitting and and the plans and all that other stuff.
Should it specifically say for the town of Lebanon?
Yeah.
Then an affidavit of town of Lebanon.
An affidavit of town of Lebanon of all disability to provide that permits.
Yeah, you're right, you don't care about.
I'd be probably signed and notarized at the very least, though. Not that that probably, there's a whole lot, but at least, so we don't even know Kevin O'Neil, right?
Right.
No. And we're probably not gonna.
No, we're not gonna.
I mean, Chris said he just recently found it out, cause you have a, he came with this, he wasn't following the project.
Yeah, so they, they went for a final, they think they done it. So they are buying it, they're buying it.
Of course, the big thing is, there's nothing we can do about this anyway.
Oh, you're probably right.
What can we do?
Nothing.
True.
We like it or don't like it, it doesn't really matter.
I know, but you know, it just makes you think when we, how many of these have we done? It, well, you know?
Oh, yeah.
It's like.
The town's gonna have to write ordinances for.
Oh my God, we can't do that, oh, I shouldn't.
Cause I mean, the same thing could happen though, I mean, we could approve Mr. Walsh and he could sell that subdivision, right?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
And then they could go, the next person could go build it on those permits.
True.
Well.
Like Moose Crossing.
Yeah.
Channing down the street there, I could go in and buy all, all three hundred buildings, all six units and just, just become a regular landlord, run them all up.
Right, and you could build them. And once it's approved, you can do it.
Yeah. That's the problem, because you don't have your enforcement.
Based on what you're saying, Steve, that what can we do? To me, if we could get this letter and at least have it notarized.
I think that's a good, good, you know, I mean, at least.
Have that.
We could add new villages.
Yeah.
Yeah, right.
Right, we did add new villages.
I mean, how much, how much can we?
We can't.
No.
I mean, they say they're gonna do that, the nine yards, right?
Right.
I mean, that's fine, right?
But if they sign in front of a notary or whatever saying they're gonna do it, you have.
This is your word, right?
This was your word.
And you're representing your organization, if there's a figure, right? Maybe that's what we do, other than that, there's someone you use passing.
Yeah.
Training's fine. It's a bill that'll last forever.
Transmission's fine, trust me.
I don't know what else to go over and do, really, I mean.
I, I think that's what you request, right, is if you can supply us with this information here, notarized.
Yeah.
A notarized copy, wet copy.
Yeah.
Right, send it to us.
Yeah.
Right? And then.
Be filed by the town.
Yep, it'll be filed by the town.
If there's any problems, they can pull up the other documents saying, yeah, this is what was agreed upon, this is what we're gonna hold you to.
So when we say that filed by the town, right, so how's that gonna work? Because the plans are already recorded, so if they go to the registry of deeds to pull up that plan, it's gonna be in the first name.
But we can still just write to.
Or the first name, or the fourth page, or the fifth page.
Right, cause I mean, that can happen with any recorded picture, really, right?
Yeah.
Somebody's gonna do.
But where is this, but where is this document gonna be kept, the wet, the, the copy?
Should it be attached to the registered, recorded document, or?
If you're gonna have this.
We're gonna have this notarized.
Yeah.
With a, you know, a wet copy, they'll send it to you in the mail.
Yeah.
Right, so you'll have the original wet copy, and of course, we, we put this in front of us and have to approve it.
Yeah, but when they, if they're buying this, it's gonna get re-recorded anyway, right, the new ownership in York County.
Well, is, is that one thing that we put in there? Okay, yeah, you're gonna buy it, which means you need them plans over to you in your name. You bring us a set of plans with this letter or a note.
And just have the set of plans come and be attached to this document?
Yeah, you could actually put this with your note on your plan.
Right.
And once this would be included in the plan.
Right, at least one set to the town.
Gosh, you're sharp sometimes.
Not changing the plan though.
You're not changing the plan, not re-recording the plan, but.
Not re-recording, and it's a.
But, yeah, that's a good idea.
Yeah, alright. But if you don't, if we draw twenty-five years from now and they're decommissioning it and there's no money to decommission it, you guys.
We don't know who the owner is.
We don't know who the owner is.
Okay, I'm lost.
But there's a bond.
Because the original plan, uh, plan was in these, this person's name. So if they went and pulled it at the deed, right, it's gonna be in whatever company Chris was with at first, right? So that, it's never gonna reference back to who the new owners is. But by rights, when they do a deed to that, it should be deed it to the new owners, but do we require them to revise the plan?
But this wasn't a purchase, this was a lease, wasn't it? They didn't buy this, this is, this is a lease, Carson wanted it in.
That's right.
Twenty-five year lease.
Yeah, one thing we, I do think we need though, is there must be a new bond issued by the new, by the new, cause these people are responsible for the bond, I would assume. That's a question we need to know.
West Lebanon Solar LLC. West Lebanon Solar LLC.
L C owns the bond.
Owns the bond.
So these guys are buying West Lebanon Solar LLC.
Hightown.
Intends to, and it, well, it says right here, they're buying West Lebanon now.
LLC and all the assets.
In interest, yeah.
So that's why this should be notarized, that this is an actual.
This is illegal, though, yeah.
Yeah, that's, no, that's.
You, that's my question, though, what do we do with this?
Well, I assume it's, once you notarize it.
You can.
And send it to them, they're gonna send it to their legal.
Can you record this document? And re, could we record this document?
You can sit there, why not?
Could we record this document in reference to the plan that's been recorded? To the book and page?
Do you want it on?
The book and page.
I have no idea.
Because the problem is, though, that document, if you pulled that plan out, the plan, it's never gonna, it's never gonna reference this.
And, but does that plan, does that plan only reference Maine, West Lebanon Road, Solar LLC anyway?
I don't know.
I don't think it, that plan probably doesn't even reference the name of the.
Yeah, I think it did, didn't it? It didn't say the name was.
I don't think it.
Yeah, it says Maine, but nearby Maine, West Lebanon, so I don't know if you're ever gonna see all this greenback or emmeral.
Well, that's what I mean.
Right, it's probably, it may not even be on that, period.
It's gonna be West.
Maine, Levenon, the LLC.
But I'm wondering if you could, is it possible, I don't know the answer to this, if you could copy this document to put it with that plan package that's been recorded?
I'm wondering, I'm wondering what's on that.
Pull up the document with all the plans?
But is on that plan package even reference Greenback or Emmeral or any of them? So are we going a step right now that somebody's gonna go figure out who owns Maine, Levenon, LLC?
That's what I mean.
Yeah.
Because if we have this document that's notarized, on nine yards, how, how does somebody go and find this?
But somebody has to be listed on the LLC, right? There has to be somebody that the LLC goes back to, right?
They have.
There has to be a real person somewhere.
They have to go to the Secretary of State's office in order to get the name of who is listed on the LLC.
Right.
Yeah, that's true, yeah.
So that's how you can go find it, right? The town's gonna have, so the town's gonna have a head start, though, cause they're gonna have this document.
Yeah.
Right. I think the, the only person's gonna in the state's gonna be, you just said, Secretary of State.
Was that original plan filed with the state?
Yeah, they have, cause they have the, um, the bond.
The what? Yeah.
Is that bonds through DEP.
Right.
Can't that be attached to the bond?
The LLC's attached to it.
Notarized and attached to the bond, which.
Don't have the bond.
Yes, DEP owns the bond.
No, they do.
But Maine, West Lebanon Road LLC owns the bond, so somebody's gotta go back, trace that back to the LLC, right?
I don't have a clue, but.
And there we go.
So what's on it?
What is on it? Is this the right one?
Maine, Lebanon, Lebanon Road, two fifty-two, West Lebanon Road. Owner Rebecca Carson.
What's the emmeral in the corner, so you just emmeral?
Yeah.
Emmeral group.
And then technically, they're not.
This one was Renzola, what it was with the one.
Cause now Altus Power is acquiring Maine, West Lebanon LLC.
What's that one?
Which is no different than Michael Kennedy owning three or four different LLCs, right?
Right, right.
Absolutely.
Right.
Absolutely.
Michael.
Well, that, that was my only concern, is once you get, you do your due diligence, get this signed, on nine yards, where do we put it, so.
Well, that's it.
So it can't, so it can't be filed.
Yeah, so it's gonna go with our, it's gonna go with our plan and documents, right?
No.
Cause it may change hands again and again and again, right?
Right, I mean, Jen's got some stuff stapled to that, right, I mean, you could just do that, stapled to it.
So we're gonna need to buy it, so we'll find the candidates.
Am I right, assuming, though, that this.
I've got these, I've got ten.
They went for a.
They were, someone threw them away.
They went for a final, the project, this project's completed?
I think, all I heard is Ron was out there for.
But it's still Maine, West Lebanon.
Should we talk to Ron and see if it's, if he's approved it, if it's completed? Only because if it is, it's kinda like, well, okay, so.
You own it now.
This is just a money thing at this point.
True, true, there's, well.
It's like a house.
There is what there is, right, there's, there's money, cause now it's decommissioned as well.
Yeah.
Right?
But DEP, but yeah, DEP holds the bond, so if they default, the bond will pay for it.
Right.
I mean, I think having this notarized.
I think that's a good idea, yeah.
Yeah.
And it, I don't know if there's anywhere to file it, it's gonna make a difference.
No, keep it with us.
Yeah.
So, wet coffee, right?
And I mean, maybe it's a question for the DEP, maybe they could just offer something, you know, I mentioned this happens more than just in Lebanon, right? These getting passed around.
They could have quite possibly sent the letter to the DEP saying, we're buying West Lebanon.
Yeah, we're, we're gonna provide the new bond, right, cause some.
That's true, no, that's true. Yeah.
I guess, maybe, do we have a contact there, Jen, that goes back that we could just?
Maybe we're picking up the bond.
They would almost have.
I'll just go through Chris.
Yeah, just.
Cause this is, this guy is the one who wrote the letter.
Yeah, just so we know that.
Yeah.
The bond's transferred.
There might be a process, right, if you do sell this, the bond, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah, we just might not know.
We just don't know, yeah, Chris probably knows it, he can private side it.
It does happen.
The advantage, the advantage thing for us is to have this on file, because if something happens there, we have a contact number.
Yeah.
Two of them, and say, hey, your solar field is burning to the ground.
Yeah, right.
Right?
Good point.
At least we know where to go.
Right, at least we know where to go, right, rather than.
No, yeah.
Hey, call Chris at, oh, uh, yeah, hang on, let me call the Greenbacker guy, the Greenbacker says they don't own it, they sold it back to Emmeral, oh, Emmeral, you know.
No, you're right, you're right.
They sold it, they sold it to.
Right.
Cause realistically, after this is up and running, which it probably is.
So basically, they wanna know if.
Five thousand, the nearest town on the road, they could sell it, and you marry it.
It really is.
That's true, it doesn't matter.
But.
Yeah, it does, too.
But essentially, just making sure, I, to go off your points, Steve, probably gonna find out what status we are today with it.
Right.
Right, I mean, if they're, if they're done.